Are you headed down? Headed down to Sheridan? Yeah, can you come over here for a quick second? I think I just screwed up my computer, but.
Okay, I believe we should be streaming. If you can unmute your microphones by hitting the red button at the bottom of the pedestal. When you're ready to talk, it'll turn green and then everyone online should be able to hear you. They were good.
We're good. Thank you. So sorry for the delay. Welcome to this September 5th City Planning Commission meeting. As I started to commission members, we have an extremely long agenda and some very important items. So I am going to really move things along. We're still gonna make sure that we allow the opportunity for public comment and we will ensure that. But I will really keep people on time, on task, and do not be offended for the presenters if I move you along a little bit because it's not fair for those at the end of the meeting to not have the time through. So we'll be consistent about it and do not take it personally. We are gonna make sure we get the information we need, the information publicly, the ability for public comment. But we really wanna make sure people can get through and get their approval. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Director Mersman to read the rules for the city planning.
In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law and section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conduct their meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceeds are also being live streamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Proper channels for comments are listed below. Communication with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by the Wednesday noon deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. The proper channels for public comment include sending an email to the cityplanning@clevelandohio.gov address with a comment or a letter, calling or leaving a message at 216-664-2210, or sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall 601 Lakeside Avenue, Suite 501, Cleveland, Ohio, 44114. Our meeting rules and procedures are that the chair will call each agenda item and then each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize Design Review Advisory Committee recommendations, if applicable, and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after an agenda item has been called.
Thank you. Evelyn, call the roll.
Anthony.
Present.
Flucker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Sergeant.
Present.
And Slade.
Present.
Full house. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the August 15th meeting, which we've had in advance. There's a copy here if anyone needs it. We'll need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Upstate.
Sergeant.
Upstain.
And Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. First item is a conditional use, which is like zoning matter. We have actually two zoning matters, the first two items, which are a public hearing. So for these matters, we follow a procedure by which staff will first make a presentation and report on the zoning matter. We will then ask for the sponsor to make a short presentation and then we will open it up for public comment, the public hearing. So first we'll hear from opponents of that zoning change and second we'll hear from those who are opposed. If anyone has questions, you're welcome to ask them also at any time and I will be keeping people to two minutes or less. So the first item is a large residential facility for 10 people. This is at 1582 East 86th Street. And imagine Xavier, that's why you're here. So please take it away.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Xavier Bay. I'm in the zoning section of city planning. Today I'm presenting to you a large residential facility proposed on East 86th Street. The applicants are here today. Mr. Edward Fields and his assistant Heather are in the audience here.
If you want to go ahead and come up here in advance, that would speed things up, keep it going.
Thank you. And so they can answer any questions after my presentation if you have further questions for them. And so on the screen here right now, we're showing on the right, you can see our location map for existing residential facilities. So you can see they're not located within 1,000 feet of another facility. And so the main reason you're seeing this today is because the proposal is for a residential care facility that's state licensed that is gonna occupy over five persons and is located in a multifamily residential district. On the bottom left, you see the home proposed. Next slide, please. Sorry, I forgot the clicker. So here's a closer zoom in. You can see they're just outside of the proximity of a few other residential care facilities in a property zone, multifamily. Next slide, please. And so the main criteria that you're looking at for approval here is to assure that the property is not located within 1,000 feet of another facility, to assure that this land use is compatible with the ongoing character and context of the neighborhood and making sure that any type of, you know, signs or parking and yards are all applicable to the zoning code. And so they're not making any changes to the exterior of the home at all and not proposing any signage. So you could tell right off the bat, it's gonna fit in pretty well to the context of the residential character of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. I think that might actually be the last slide. Oh yeah, and then it has some context photos. You can see there are some other multifamily complexes, apartment buildings very closely nearby across the street, down the street, and then some other two-family, single-family homes. Next slide, please. I think we're gonna jump into the site plans. You know, it's the two and a half story home. And then we can see the bedrooms and et cetera. The applicant actually has a bit more details that they'll go into as far as the actual, you know, project plan or, you know, business plan that they have. But this slide here just recaps the conditional use requirements. You know, they're not located in 1,000 feet of another facility. It is compatible with the character of the neighborhood and they're not making any changes to the yard, parking or sign on the property. They're not gonna require any variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so that seems like a very decent, you know, location for a project of this nature. And after this, we have the applicant's presentation that they can go into any more detail if you would like them to.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome. Please state your name when you speak and your relationship to the project and they can walk through your slides as you need. So go ahead.
Sure.
Good morning.
For me?
Whichever of you want to present.
So. All right, what do I do? Just talk? Okay, so in the past, we kinda thought that the building had two different addresses. So we thought that we could do two different licenses. And then, you know, I've been doing this for 30 years. So in the past, you could get two licenses in one house. The rules have changed. So now we have two houses, but we can only get one license. So therefore, we're asking to treat us as if we had two houses so we can the number of people that, because the legislation says a family home can only have five people. But we have two houses and six, seven bedrooms. So we, if we don't get some kind of a thing, then we would not be able to use all our spaces that we intended to use. That's basically it.
Is there anything to share?
Not to the square footage. I just wanted to talk about the program that we would have in that facility. It'd be a state licensed facility. We'd like the capacity to serve between five and 10 people. Staffing levels may change. We get referrals from mental health hospitals, county jails, shelters. Transportation services would not be provided due to insurance and our policies and procedure manuals include a visitation policy outlining designated hours. Services provided, three meals plus a snack, ensuring a clean and safe environment and monitoring medication administration. Service is not provided. We're not a rehabilitation center. We don't offer counseling. We don't provide medical care and we're not a detox nor a sober living facility. Like you said, he's been doing this for 30 years. He already has three other facilities that are operable and properly licensed through the state. And we just like the opportunity to use this residential facility to continue the work that we've been doing through the years.
And you're the owner and you're the operator? What is your relationship?
Yeah, I'm the owner.
He's the facility owner. I'm the administrative assistant. I've been in this for several years. I've been doing this for nine years. So I can speak to the programs that we provide, the things we do, the services that we provide for our residents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we ask questions and deliberate, we're going to first open it up to see if there's public comment either online or here. So anybody who would like to speak in favor of this conditional use, either raise your hand or speak up. I don't see anyone. Is there anybody who's opposed to this conditional use or has a question? I don't see anyone. That's good.
Yeah, we're pretty good in the neighborhood and, you know, people like what we do and we are very respectful of the neighborhood. We do not take sexual offenders and things of that nature. You know, the people came to us and said, you know, you're good as long as you are respectful and don't take the people who have bad sexual behaviors. And so we don't do that.
Last question before I open it up for questions from the commission. First we'll close the public portion. Is the councilwoman supportive of this? Do we have a letter? Do we have support? Do we know?
No, yeah, this is Xavier Bay again. There's no comment from the councilperson.
Did you reach out?
They do get a notice about these in their ward.
So, okay. All right, commission members, any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Chair, I move to approve the conditional uses present. The caveat that there'll be a residential facility for up to 10. They appear to meet all the zoning criteria. They're not in with 1,000 feet of another residential care facility. They're not making any exterior improvements, nor do they require zoning.
A second. A motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
And Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Next item is also a zoning matter. It's a conditional use, a townhouse in a two-family district. This is the Jefferson Hill Town Homes at West 5th and Jefferson Avenue in Tremont. And it says here Xavier's doing this one, so you'll have to go back.
I'm the prettier Xavier.
Go ahead. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning. Just in the interest of time with the long agendas, the reason why I'm jumping here.
Are the project reps online or here?
They, I believe, are online and Jeff is here.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is really, you guys may remember Jefferson Hill Town Homes came late, earlier this year, late last year. And so there's been a modification to the buildings in regards to what's, what happened at Building and Housing after they went through our process. And so because there was a site modification, a site plan modification, and the buildings appeared different from the right away, they have to come back before you for the conditional use and get the approval. I will state from the front end, I don't know why this isn't working. Next slide, please. They don't need any variances. It's not working. All right, so again, just to give you some clarification, this is at the corner of Jefferson and West 5th. And so this is the site location. You will remember it's zone semi-industry and two-family, which causes that split zoning issue, which requires the conditional use. This was the original site plan. You'll notice the five-unit buildings and then the layout here. So this is the site. You'll remember that there was a huge grade change between the tow path up, going up Jefferson or West 5th. And essentially, they're here because you have to determine whether they meet these site plan conditions. And so is the development visually compatible with nearby properties and scale, height setbacks, orientation, roof lines, and architectural character, materials, colors, and proportion of features? And this is just giving you some context along Jefferson and West 5th, looking north as well as looking south. All right, next slide. And so the difference that you'll see here really is the split up of the buildings into three and two and three and two. And that was as a result of going to Building and Housing and the fire department and having some issues with, you know, working it out with fire and Building and Housing, which Mr. Foster can talk about a little bit more. So again, the conditional use is this development compatible? Does a site plan work? The biggest concerns from a zoning perspective is really just how are we treating in between the two buildings from a safety perspective and circulation, knowing that going down to the tow path, there's a significant grade change. But from there, I will turn it over to Mr. Foster and Mr. Allen to talk about the differences. Here's.
Jeff Foster, Pato Architects, 220 West 6th Street. So the primary change that Shannon had mentioned is we split the buildings that are along the tow path and the building that's along Jefferson. Those were one contiguous unit before. Architecture stays the same on all the units. The way we achieved it was by shuffling around a couple of the unit types. So nothing changed on proportion, style, or detail. We just split the buildings that face the tow path. You can see that in this rendering here as well. And we split the buildings that face Jefferson. So to Shannon's comment about the concern along the tow path and the grade changes, our proposal to that is where there's a six-foot gap between the two buildings that face the tow path, we would fence that off so that that wouldn't be accessible from the tow path just to keep folks from wandering through there. The area that's up along Jefferson, this is almost nine feet between these two. So we see that as a nice way for folks within the development to cross back and forth to access the stair along Jefferson, and it could be a nice outdoor amenity. Another benefit of splitting the buildings is it allows us to add some windows to the sides of some of these units. So we saw it actually as a positive in terms of how these buildings relate to each other and relate to the site. Any questions?
No. I agree with that. I agree. Okay, so we're gonna open it up real quick and see if there is anyone who would like to speak to this matter first in favor of this conditional use or has a question. I don't see anyone. Is there anybody opposed to this conditional use? I don't hear anyone. So I'm assuming also Councilwoman Cormac is supportive and.
He was notified and there was a sign put in the yard on both sides of the street, corners, two weeks ago.
You last saw this, I think it was in October or November last year.
I remember. Okay, thank you. So we'll close the public portion. Commission members, any questions or comments? I remember the long presentation last time. The shorter one is this time. I like to bring her on. Thank you. Anyone?
I'll move approval of the conditional use or not conditional use, townhomes in a family district. Apologize.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
And Slade.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing this project. It's very cool. So I know it's been a while. So it's been a long road. We need to speed things up, but we will. All right, we have four demolitions. So good morning. I do not need to swear you in because you're forever sworn in working at the city of Cleveland. But you have four demolitions. You can just kind of, you have five. Go through them quick. All right, first one.
All right, first one.
First one is 17427 Harvard Avenue. And this is in Councilmember Jones's support. Go ahead.
So this is a residential structure and garage. Good, next slide, please.
I don't need to go much farther, but but we'll let it go through. While it's going, we'll decide what style of architecture it's like.
I was sick in the scene.
Post-war ranch, trying to be two stories at the same time.
So this had a fire. They did some siding in the roof, but the interior, you can just go through the pictures a little bit and then it'll tell the story, I guess, right? I mean, that's right on the technical difficulties. It's okay.
Technical, technical, technical.
Oh, no.
We can see.
Everyone's gonna look at my computer.
Yeah, we can see.
Been vacant for a while, obviously. No windows. But we'll hold on. We need to.
I know. I can't just turn this around.
That was the old time, the old days. You had to bring your boards. Yes. We've no longer. We, pre-COVID, we could do it. Oh my goodness. There you go. Good job.
Yeah, you could just scroll through the pictures. And the end result is we're gonna demolish the structures, remove all foundation, backfill with clean soil, seed and straw.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of S... Oh, excuse me, sorry. Madam Chair, I move for approval of CSE 2025-3417427 Harvard Avenue for demolition. There were no recommendations from Design Review and planning staff is in support.
Second.
Second. Second. Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry. Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Next one is EC 2025-023. This is at 1785 East 47th Street. This is actually a nuisance abatement demolition.
Yeah, so this is also a residential structure and looked like a shed and or garage. Next slide, please. Owner's had it since 2006. It's been condemned since 2014. There's been no work done it. It's been vacant since at least 2014. As part of, we have a grant funding to demolish this, so we would like to get this approved. And then you can just go through the pictures and whatnot.
I am clicking. I promise.
Oh, no, it's not you. I know, it's just.
I think it's because the file is like over 200 pages long.
Probably the size of the overall file. Not this, not your file, but there's like 500. Get a PDF.
It might, but like you might not have the ability to share your screen on these certain accounts too. Oh no, oh no. Oh no, oh no. Oh no, oh no. Okay.
Evelyn, we got you. Did you catch that?
Yeah.
I will move approval of the demolition at 1785 East 47.
And a second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next one is at 3417 East 93rd Street. This is 2025-025.
And this is also a residential structure and garage. Let's say exterior of the structure behind in taxes. We've recently been, neighbors getting complaints that wanting to demolish this and we just condemned it recently, so it's been at least vacant for at least a year. You could just go through the pictures.
Would you remind me, when you demolish something, you put a lien on the property, right?
So what usually happens is if 99% of the time, they're not able to pay for the demolition. And so we do, and there's already a condemnation lien or something that's put on the title to cloud it. But then if they don't pay for the demolition, it goes through the tax for closure and the city, you know, in about two, three years, may acquire the property.
So lined up in the land bank.
Yep.
Madam Chair, I move to approve demolition of EC 2025-253417 East 93rd Street.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Our next one on page eight is 10515 Helena Avenue. This is a nuisance abatement demolition, 2025-22. This is a nuisance abatement demolition two zero two five dash two two.
Yeah, so this is a, this is like a weird property in which the front of the structure, the front of the parcel is a large landmark parcel, but the rear is just a regular residential, residential structure. And this is, uh, the housing court is requesting us to demolish this. The owner said they couldn't pay for it, so they wanted us to facilitate and they tried to get on a payment plan. Uh, so you could just go through the pictures. Like I said, that's a big church. Um, but those are the exterior.
Is that the back or the front?
Uh, if you go back. Yeah, if you go back, um, one more.
I just wanted to see the historical.
Okay.
It's okay.
It's okay.
Is that one occupied?
There's squatters here and there. Um, so we've had to board it up a couple of times. But then when the surveyor was there, they kindly asked them to leave. They do leave.
For a while.
Yeah. And so at the demolition point, we probably may have to get post, uh, you know, we probably have to post legal order to, you know, vacate the premises and maybe police involved.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of any two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-two one zero five one five Helena Avenue. Uh, no recommendations from the design review and planning support, planning staff, excuse me, is in support.
My second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slay.
Yes.
Motion carries. I think this is your last one.
Yes, uh, superior.
Five oh seven Superior Avenue. Um, this is two zero two five dash zero two three.
Yes, this is just a residential structure. Uh, next slide. Um, the owner's had it since two thousand and four. Um, I mean, the taxes are current, but it's been condemned since twenty nineteen. We've had three complaints since twenty seventeen. Um, there's been a civil ticket recently issued. And again, you could just scroll through the pictures. Like someone squatting on the porch?
I will move approval of any twenty twenty-five twenty-three demolishing sixty-five oh seven Superior. Second?
Motion and a second.
Anthony.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slay.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to design review, so now we'll be taking a little longer. Um, we have northeast two zero two five dash zero two five. This is Glen Haven, one oh six oh nine Superior. This is new construction. This is for schematic approval. And you can see the comments from design review. There were some comments. They weren't conditioned since this is schematic. And it looks like Sandra. Welcome. Haven't seen you in a while. Good to see you. I'm going to swear you both in for design review. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? All right. And just hit the button to be green. So then online, I'll be able to hear. Thank you. Your slides are.
Good.
So good morning. Um, this is private Glen Haven, which is a respite and intermediate care. Um, I have with me the owner. This was, this facility. Um, and it's a three and a half story facility. First floor is retail. Um, and upper floors are the respite intermediate care and then offices on the top floor. Um, that side. Located here on Superior. You see the, um, the location. Um, and so this building pretty fits very tightly onto the site. Um, we have been through Pet Bot and spoken with the fire marshal and make sure that we have all of the requirements for the truck to get to all sides of the building. Um, we do have, um, okay, we do have some landscaping. We talk with, uh, planning also to make sure that we have the planting required. And this is just a turning raises for the maneuvering of the truck. If you go back one, um, we know that we do have some parking that's in within the, uh, no, no parkings on the setback parking. So we will be needing a variance for that. We also have two curb cuts onto the site, which is also in need of a variance. Um, since this isn't an urban overlay district, but because the, the, um, street to Combsa, which is on the north side, is only, it's really like more of an alley. It's only twelve foot wide. Um, we, we couldn't get trucks down that's, you know, to, to, to access the site from behind. So we had to have a way to get them on and off of the site, which is why we have two, um, two curb cuts right now from Superior. As you can see here, the maneuver, the way of this, of the trucks. Um, we will also be taking down or burying, um, a telephone line, which is going across, um, from the building so they can have access to that site. So we'll be burying that, that one line that's there. Um, this is some, um, this is the site plan with the, where we have some site amenities. We'll have places for bikes and an outdoor seating area for the, uh, for the residents of the center. Um, we've also tried to green, go back one more time, green the space because we know first week there was a lot of asphalt. Um, so we've provided in the top, um, left-hand corner, you can see there's some green hatched area that is a structured, um, grass structure underneath so that trucks can ride over it, fire trucks. Um, a system that we've used before, which works really well. And, um, we always plan for hopefully never having to worry about that. So, um, we're trying to disguise it, but the, you know, the fire marshal will know that they can ride over that area. But, um, hopefully that never happens. But, you know, we plan for the worst. Um, so that's where that is right now. Um, that's next slide. Is that it? This is just showing the, you know, the plan. We do have a couple of structures on the site. We have some utilities on the site as well. We have, there will be a transformer generator. And in the, you can see in, in the bottom elevation, go back one, bottom elevation, go back, go back one, going forward, go back, right there, bottom left hand corner. You can see that's where we'll have also a cooling turret behind that louvered structure on the other side. So like I said, this building is very, very tight. There's a lot of things that have to happen on this one site, but I think we've guided pretty much all to work. Um, and hopefully there'll be a very pleasant place to, to visit. So that's all I have. Glen Haven. Anyone else want to say anything more on my team?
Thank you.
At least from a staff perspective, uh, Northeast Design Review, this project was well received. This project has visited Pet Bot twice, um, to reconfigure their site to work. But this will be in my notes at the top, this is going to be a needed addition to this corner and an overall addition to the neighborhood for one oh five and Superior. It's a, a better caliber project than a gas station or another strip mall, um, to occupy this corner of this main street.
Commission members, any questions, comments?
Yeah.
Curious why it's not final?
Well, I, I'm confused and I don't want to belabor this point. I, having practiced architecture for a lot of years, I don't understand why fire truck has to get around this building. It's fully sprinkled, right? You have fire alarms. You have a, it makes no sense to me. Um, it, it, there's nothing in the code that requires it. I think with the fire marshal is, is actually doing, in my opinion, is, is being a little more stringent than I think one needs to be. Um, I don't know if that causes a hardship to you, you all, but I just, you know, I'm not going to argue with them. I just don't see why you would go through all these gymnastics to, to put in special pavers and grass to accommodate something that probably would not happen, only because you're trying to appease the fire marshal. But I'm not going to beat that horse. Um, I do have questions about the comments. They're, they're really cryptic. Um, I don't know what it means by reviewing the landscaping or, or and or reduced walks around the building. I don't know what that means. We have some.
Site plan. Um, you go back to the site plan. And this was, okay, so, so we had, we had a walk that went around, um, to the north side. And they wanted us to, you know, there's, there's no reason for that to happen. So we just eliminated that. Um, we had a walk that went around, that walk went all around the, the whole building. And they said we don't need that much paving. So we took that out. Um, and then, um, and again, we added some green, the, the, you know, some grass. At first it was all paved and it was, it was an asphalt jungle. So with that, wait a minute, let's see if we can green it up a little bit more.
We've made those changes.
We've made those changes. Yeah. We've, we've made those changes.
That's why I'm questioning whether this ought to be final approval and just go to the staff. They should move.
I didn't, I do not think we, we need to see this again, if you do, unless you do.
No, no, I'm fine with me.
I was going to post that at the end as well.
Right.
To move the project along. They have worked very hard. And in addition, that's not on here. They have worked with RTA in regards to the fire and that curb cut getting in. A bus stop is going to move a little bit so that access will be more easy.
Yeah. You know, as, I'm gonna, I'm a senior. No, seriously. And I try and find places to walk. I mean, I, I, I understand this is a tight site, but I think it's always nice to create a path around the site where people can actually recreate and exercise and get their final steps into ten thousand if they're challenging someone. But, um, again, I know this is a tight site. So again, I'm not gonna lose any sleep over that one. Just wanted to put that, that blurb in. We need to think about how people live. And, 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 and this is near a hundred and five, right? So it's pretty busy, right? Um, there's not a lot around there. There's a library and a couple of other things, but just creating something on site that people can use as an amenity.
Madam Chair, to the applicant, two comments. Um, and kind of coming off their, Commissioner Fluker's comment. I'm not sure how folks get to that dumpster, uh, in the kind of northwest side of the property. I, I see kind of that angle coming off the, the street. But how, how does someone like take their trash to that?
So the trash, there's, there's a kitchen. So most of the trash would be coming from the kitchen, which is on that west side. There's a door. So they will come around and, um, and, and this drop it in the dumpster. So it won't be, it would really be staff that would be actually using that dumpster, not the residents.
Okay. It just looks like there's a fence there. Is there like a gate and a fence?
Yeah, there will be a gate there. A fence. Yes, there is a fence around the site. We're still working on exactly, you know, where it goes and where it stops. But there will be a gate, um, at both entrances, I believe. We have talked about that. And also, so people, we don't want people to, to drive through the site, just to drive through to, to cut, you know, if there's. So that's, um, what we have now. Um, the truck would think would come down to Combsa, you know, and then.
Back in.
Back, yeah. And then back out and go out to Combsa. So that's where the trash truck would come.
Fair enough. And, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, and just also to further answer that question, when it comes to the clients that'll be staying there and their trash, we actually have a specific service elevator. So that service elevator, the trash will go up and down between the floors throughout the facility as well. And then we carried out the back by staff.
Gotcha. Um, one question about the generator and transformer area. Is that area going to have any type of enclosure or kind of screening to that?
It will.
Okay.
And we're looking, hopefully have the gate on to Combsa so that, you know, we, you know, but we'll see if they, if there's enough service, you know, enough area for them to service it from to Combsa instead of from the parking lot. But we're still working on that.
We were advised that Pet Bot, that city will not pick up the trash. So they will be utilizing a private.
But we are utilizing Cleveland Public Power.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna move to approve as final, um, the, uh, project located at one oh six zero nine Superior Avenue, known as Glen Haven. Um, it appears that the applicant has addressed the, um, comments made by staff. And so therefore, I don't think there's any conditions that are attached to this.
Second?
And it's final?
Yes, I said final in the beginning. Yeah.
Just clarifying.
Okay.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. I call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Great project. Uh, what that really means is that, um, unless you have any, you're going to go to staff to get the sign up on this. You'll resolve everything here with, and the director can sign up as long as you resolve it. If for some reason you can't, then you'll come back. But I think you will. So, um, can't wait to see the project. It's a great project. So thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
The next, a, a couple items. I'm going to explain how we're going to do this. So, we are going to hear all of these together. Um, and, but we're going to take sep, four separate motions, uh, because they're all related. And anyone coming up to speak on this one, please come up now. Um, and I'll swear you all in. So we will be hearing, um, this is Bedrock project. Both, um, we'll hear, um, the Cleveland Clinic Peak Performance Center. Um, we're looking at the schematic public realm, which is the first item. Um, and why I want to hear them all is just the whole context, plus the two vacations. And then we'll vote separately on all of them. The second one is, um, the, um, uh, final approval, uh, for, uh, the building itself, the Peak Performance Center. We were still waiting to see the site lighting amenities, right? That's what we're seeing on that second one. So the kind of, uh, any, and to commission members, you can see, um, the comments there that were made from design review. Um, staff will present as well, um, on both of these. Then there are two street vacations that are relative to this that are mandatory referrals. So we're going to hear it all as quickly as possible.
Yes.
But take your time because we need to understand it. Um, and then we'll, we'll act on all of these. So first, do you all swear, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Do.
And before you speak, just state your name and who you represent.
First of all, just, I see you guys more than my relatives.
I know.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Okay.
How lucky are we? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Fluker. Yes. Okay, good morning. Thank you. You have, and to that point, um, thank you for having us back, um, and acknowledging we are here quite a bit and also acknowledging this wonderful agenda. So we've been advised by our team at City Planning, MOCAP, to speak with alacrity, as my mother would say. Um, and I also always need to acknowledge just, you know, the heft and the pull that got us to this point and the great things that we have for our team at City Hall, which is extensive and expansive, but also our team here together with me. And also, um, dialing in. So I will cut short any, um, any big presentation at the beginning. I'll throw it straight to Cullen. Um, I do want to note, we are doing public realm at schematic. We are doing site at final. And then we have our mandatory referrals. It is, I think, it can be confusing because it's all the same site. And so we're just following right of way in private lines in accordance with, you know, the city's request.
Thank you very much. Uh, Cohen Mavis with MKSK. Um, next slide.
Oh, here, go on. Sorry. There we go. Yeah, you move this way. Okay. Uh, so while we're here today, schematic approval for the public realm elements, uh, of the site. And you're all familiar with the project area now. This is part of the overall master plan vision, and it is the first sequence and the first public realm improvements as part of this much larger endeavor. What we're here for today, seeking schematic, are the public realm improvements to West Third, the public realm improvements for Eagle Avenue, which is the new bridge connecting Ontario Street, West Third and Stones Levy, and the initial sequence of the riverfront walkway, uh, as it is in front of the Global Peak Performance Center and directly adjacent to the private site. This is our existing conditions a while ago now. Feels like a while ago now. This is somewhat recent, although the site is moving fast. Everyone, I'm sure, has seen the vertical going up now. Everyone, I'm sure, has seen the vertical going up now. And so how are these projects, this project and these public improvements fit into the larger context? There are a lot of, um, public improvements, uh, trails, bike ways, riverfront activations that are happening all around the site. And we are trying to make sure that our site ties into those either existing or future improvements, um, as they are conceived. So you can see here the connection to Memorial Bridges Loop Trail at the top of, at Ontario. Anticipating, and I believe we are striping the connection to the East Ninth Extension, uh, portion of the tow path. The future Riverwalk extension that will connect to Canal Basin Park and Sedgefield Landing. And just how this all fits into the larger context of downtown Cleveland and all of the improvements and riverfront, um, projects that are underway. And just a, a view of that, um, 3D and, and some of the activations that are envisioned for, um, along the riverfront and that this initial project will connect into. This is to, uh, provide some clarity to the zones that we're talking about today. Streetscape improvements here are the areas highlighted in red. The Cav's Clinic Global Peak Performance Center is the area in magenta. We are surrounded by future developments and future improvements. And then the Riverwalk, as it is, um, tucked in there nicely between Cairo River and the building. The project includes a number of improved streetscapes that also, uh, seek to incorporate multimodal improvements. Uh, so we're highlighting a few of the changes here that have happened since we were, uh, in front of you for concept. The bike lanes have moved to the west, to the north, north side, page north side of West Third. Um, the planter has shifted outward the right of way per comments we received. And we've also spent a lot of time on that corner, making sure that cyclists can come around and be safely separated from pedestrians. And pedestrians can equally get to the crosswalks as well. And so this is a look at that area in detail. We have 12-foot cycle track, uh, connecting to a 14-foot on-street cycle track. Uh, so these are well in excess of ODOT minimums for, uh, mobility requirements. We also have, uh, sidewalk improvements here that are connected directly adjacent to that. Uh, and the connectivity of bringing cyclists across West Third and across Stones Levy over to the riverfront. Uh, we, there's been a lot of discussion about how to bring cyclists and pedestrians safely through this area. The intersection is an incredibly challenged, um, location from both a, uh, space and grade, uh, perspective. And we've been working with the city on, on what's possible from ADA and pro-arg. And we do have some extremes, uh, grade constraints as you come down Eagle Ave, which is why we only have a crosswalk at that location. Just north of that, our grades increased to 5% and then up to the bridge 9.5%. So we're not able to achieve, uh, ADA, uh, crosswalk, um, requirements. We have been looking at the crosswalk and the sidewalk as it comes across the Cav's driveway within the right of way. And we can achieve a, an ADA compliant crossing there. So, uh, keeping it in the public realm, connecting it directly to the Riverwalk, uh, and making it flush with the sidewalks. There are some things we need to work out in terms of safety for vehicles turning, because we don't want them to turn up onto the sidewalk in that scenario. But it is possible. And then looking down, uh, at the extension of West Third, this is just showing the extension of the bike improvements that will then transition to a striped condition pass here off-site.
Are there vacations, um, necessary for this aspect of the tunnel?
Right, so to the chair, and this is maybe, um, a good example. The vacations are correcting longstanding right-of-way lines, so, yeah, yeah, I think it can be both and. The vacations are primarily for updates and continuity of maintenance.
Oh, so as you talk about intersections, could you, if you had done this, I apologize if I missed it. Can you identify what type of signalization, or is it a stop sign, or, you know, pedestrian, whatever?
Yep, absolutely.
As you walk through this.
And I'll jump back here. So this is a three-way stop-controlled intersection. Each of the light bars will have stop signs associated with it, and then the drive is the, the last leg of that. It doesn't warrant, uh, a signalization at this point based on traffic that's anticipated. Uh, and then there's, the green striped is the designated cycle track crossings and connection to the Riverwalk. And then traditional ladder striping for pedestrians. And this is a, a cross-section as we're looking at the public improvements adjacent to the clinic parking lot, showing the 14-foot, uh, two-way cycle track generous buffer, and then the, uh, two-way drivelines, as well as sidewalk and street tree improvements. We have very generous street lawns here for the trees, uh, to encourage, uh, a canopy that we'd like to cheat with this streetscape. And then another cross-section looking at the clinic entrance. You see that pulled-back, um, planter, and then the on-sidewalk cycle track. We brought it up on sidewalk at this location from a safety perspective, uh, to allow for, uh, safe turning motions as you're coming off of Eagle and on to West Third, without having vehicles also being turning directly adjacent to those cyclists. A view looking up Eagle Ave, where we have a curb-protected cycle track, two-way, um, lanes and sidewalk on each side. Just a plan, looking at that and showing the improvements to the sidewalks, both under the occupied space and then as you transition to what is a formal bridge, uh, as you come out from underneath the building space. And then as we're moving up Eagle Avenue, this is more of a traditional, um, bridge cross-section, uh, standard sidewalks, still above minimums, um, in all locations. 12-foot, five, eight, or eight and a half feet, and then we have our two-way, uh, drivelines of 12. And we have been working with engineering throughout. We have approval of stage-two drawings for, uh, the bridge and for West Third. Up here, connecting to, uh, Memorial Bridges Loop, we're connecting with the, uh, a crosswalk and condition, uh, and bringing the cyclists up to the sidewalk and then transitioning over to Memorial Bridges Loop Trail, as well as the, the, um, existing crosswalk connections that are there today. And a cross-section of what that looks like. Here, we are designing this bridge to, uh, to meet ODOT standards and city standards. And what that entails are elements like the fencing, the three-foot parapet, the lighting, um, all come with requirements. And we have, are moving those requirements by also, but also trying to add some aesthetic elements as well to help dress up what is otherwise sometimes a very functional space. Uh, so in that, it's the handrails that are there for comfort and almost a gesture of welcoming to people to really, you're, you're supposed to be on this bridge, please come down. Uh, the, uh, fencing is going to be a stainless steel material rather than the typical chain link. It's much more transparent, it has, uh, an air of refinement to it. And the verticals similarly are going to have more of a minimalist approach than, uh, a typical chain link post. And this has all been reviewed with RTA and, uh, the city for ODOT compliance. We also have been working with the city on lighting and making sure that these are safe corridors, that they meet the, the requirements, uh, for city, uh, lighting and standards within the roadway. And we are closely coordinating with the understructure lighting for the building that is aesthetic. But we will also have safe, uh, safety lighting for the street that is white and on all the time, and we'll have separate controls so that it is able to be controlled by the city, uh, and outside of the city, of the building. A look at the proposed fixtures, the ones on the right are what's proposed for the Riverwalk. And then showing the scale of what's proposed here, we're using a standard 30-foot pole for the, uh, bridge and proposing a, a custom pole for West Third that is a shorter height, uh, to create more of a public realm and a, a public canopy.
I do have a question, and I've noticed throughout the city, when we introduce new infrastructure and we put lights, Euclid Corridor or Health Line, Opportunity Corridor, these poles get knocked down and they're never replaced. My concern is, I don't know, and it is, you know, it's important, because I think collaborating with the city and CPP, is there like attic stock? Is there something that we can do to avoid these sort of stains and eyesores that are created when these, these lights stop functioning or they get knocked down? Because I haven't seen any replaced.
Uh, thank you to the chair, to Mr. Fluker, yes, I, and obviously, um, we have that concern as well. And in working together with city departments and CPP, understand that attic stock is critical. Not just, um, for the functional element of lighting, but also the, if you will, the psychological element of when those poles go down and aren't repaired. Um, I will say that with complete deference to the teams that need to do that. But attic stock is very much a current topic in our conversations.
So then, just looking at some of the materiality here, uh, introducing some architectural, uh, treatments to the pavements, especially at the, at the crosswalks and at this intersection, to denote it as a place of, um, as a moment within the streetscape, as introducing a hierarchy to the streetscape as well. And then also, uh, our street tree planting scheme that shows diversity within the planting, it's requested. And so some of the treatments and the trees are proposing. This is a look at the materiality of the bridge and how it will be constructed. You have the, the parapets and the fencing that we saw previously. There will also be form-lined, uh, precast panels for the MSC walls, which are shown here in yellow. The steel is, uh, what some may know as like a Corten, it's a weathering steel. Um, and we do have, uh, galvanized in one section, which is section two, which is kind of the lime green there. And just showing some of these treatments adjacent to each other, the MSC wall. The interior treatment, which is more of a faceted, uh, treatment and a, a custom form liner to, it's tying into the geometries of the Riverwalk fascia as well. And then the exterior is a quieter, just simple form liner, um, as, as it's due next to the more, um, textural MSC. Now, moving down to that Riverwalk, um, this is where we are today. Uh, we have the connection, uh, is separated from, fully from, uh, the Cav's Drive. And that was something we talked in, at length about at the last, um, presentation of this project. How it is separated also for bikes and pedestrians through this entire corridor. Uh, and is separated, uh, from some of the more private spaces of the, the Cav's building with a planted buffer that also includes seating. We'll see a few views of that. So this is looking across, um, at the main entrance, what will be the trailhead for the kayak launch and the Riverwalk. Looking across at that Riverwalk as it passes and what you'd see from across the river, uh, the handrail, the bulkhead, how those are coordinated. And then also, uh, the plantings along the riverfront. Looking down the Riverwalk at the dimensions here and the different treatments to delineate between cyclist and pedestrian traffic. And then also our areas where we have some bump-out space and a little more room for gathering, uh, and celebration. And finally, one more view. We have coordinated the tree placement with the art panels that are planned for the form liner so that there'll be peeks into that throughout, just another element of interest for this Riverwalk. And then some of the dimensions, which we can definitely come back to if there's any questions on. I'm gonna look through these quickly, please stop me if there's anything you have a question on, but I'm trying to stay to our, um, I'm going quickly, it's not going. Probably gonna go click, 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 click.
Yeah.
Okay, so materials, again, architectural finishes on the concrete. We have some aggregate surfacing for some of the, uh, congregating areas, as well as pavers at the base of the, the planters and the seating areas. Examples of how these materials coordinate. And we're also using some stone slab from, uh, Cleveland Quarry's to bring in that really nice textural quality of the sandstone. Uh, this is actually, um, elements that they have on site that, looking for a home, uh, and are really a fantastic element for this, this site as, um, places for informal seating and, uh, in areas where we need to create some buffer. Our furnishings, that we're seeing in the renderings, but just detailed here. And coming back to that lighting feature that we saw earlier, this is the light, two lighting elements that are proposed for the Riverwalk, a shorter 15-foot pole as the majority feature, and then a more of a directional light where we need a little bit more, um, focus on some of the gathering areas. And our planting scheme continues, uh, our planting palette from the streetscape and from the parapet site, and brings it out onto the Riverwalk. Lots of seasonal, um, color here and adaptive and native species that have been reviewed by the, the city at first.
So this, so is what you're saying, is all those areas where it opens, even though it's separated, people can get up onto the public spaces of the Peak Performance Center, or they're in private?
So, uh, I don't, can't point with, there are a number of breaks in between the planters. So all of those are just privacy spaces. So you can flow easily between the private site and the public site, and then connects to the Riverwalk.
Thank you.
Yep. And then some of the, the planting scheme for Understory, uh, looking again at hardy, adaptive and native species here to create a nice mosaic palette. With that, I will.
On the, the second one, the, do you wanna, is there additional information about the final approval of the, um, this, this site and lighting, or is that all included here? Because that's for the building itself, right?
Yes, we just went through the public realm, and so we haven't done site yet.
We're gonna do it all, so we can see them in relationship to each other.
Yeah, great.
Keep, so keep going.
Okay. I think we'll have to go through.
Yeah, the next.
Thank you so much, Evelyn. I would just note, while Evelyn is scrolling, that the appendix does contain a lot of the technical drawings and/or requested exhibits that carried through from previous or prior, um, presentations and approvals.
Um, thank you for your time today. Jack Griffiths with Populous also joins on the call by colleagues at Populous, Jay Browning and Jay Grayber as well. And they can help answer any questions that we have during the comment phase. Uh, we do have a lot of slides, uh, really for your review of all the information. We plan to move through as quickly as possible, um, and focus really on some of the key slides that we have here today.
I don't think we need to go back this far, so.
We'll, we'll keep moving, we'll keep moving. The existing site, we do wanna point out the massing here relative to the limits of work at the sites and the private aspects. Um, really just to focus on the level of detail and care and coordination that we have had between our teams to make sure that there is a seamless transition between materiality and experience and details between the private aspects within that limit of work, moving into the public realm of the Riverwalk, for example. Looking at the site layouts, we have our parking within the training facility. And then to the south, we have 130 surface parking spaces to, to meet the needs of the clinic. Um, we're gonna focus here for a second on past 17 with the training facility portion. And we'll start towards the bottom of the page, uh, would be more of the, the southwest, where we have the lobby, plaza, and entry to the building. That is, um, flanked by two planters on either side. We do have accessible entry to that space, to the plaza. Whilst it won't be feasible to have accessible access across the player drive itself, there is accessible circulation utilizing the public realm aspect as well. Um, as we continue to move towards the west, we have that player drive. Continuing towards the Riverwalk, we have a series of raised, um, planters and seating areas that continues across. that continues across the edge of the building perimeter as we move north along that Riverwalk. Um, to point out, at the top of the page, we are indicating the temporary fire access that would be required day one. That's indicated up here, and we have some additional drawings for that. Moving to south of Eagle Avenue, starting at the right of the page, parcel 19, we've shown as regrading and seeding. Moving along West Third, um, with the intersection of Central Avenue, we do have access to the parking, which is two-way. That continues and turns towards the north to provide that service access towards the building and the loading areas. Um, that has been sized at the 30 feet as shown due to requirements for fire access to that area. Um, we have parking along that service drive and elsewhere throughout that area. We have allowed ample space for turnaround within all of those spaces as well. Um, we have made efforts to increase the number of large caliper shade trees within that parking area as well. As you begin to move further north, we start to see some of the accessible parking spaces as well as some dedicated bike racks for the clinic. Um, continuing along West Third, we have a two, um, two-way entry exits, for both the parking and then the drop-off, which is to the left of the page here. That drop-off includes space for dedicated drop-off lane as well as access around. Um, that continues for a one-way exit back onto West Third. We've maintained a hundred feet between those two entry-exit points. We've also maintained that 15 feet, um, to, to meet city standards to that intersection with the crosswalk. Looking into grading, I won't go into too much detail here, but working and coordinating to make sure that we're meeting, um, desires, um, watershed capture across the site. Go into more detail into both areas, north and south of Eagle. Moving through quickly, so we don't, don't stall on any of this. Uh, the slide here, looking at materiality, but in particular, we're calling out the materiality for the fire access lane and the requirement for temporary fencing along that area. As we move towards the south, where we have the loading dock, um, more towards the clinic program, we do also have an eight-foot perimeter fence on that east side. Which again, we can start to see in this view. Likewise, we also have ornamental fencing along West Third, in addition to all of the improvements within the public realm that we just saw. Going into the site materialities, and again, a lot of coordination with the public realm, similar uses of concrete finishes, tying those all in together. Um, also seeing the use of steel planters, and those have been designed with gravel stops as well, to make sure that we don't have any bleeding onto the concrete or the material. And we can see a little bit more detail here. So along Eagle, we're utilizing this planter to terrace down and, and to transition between those grades, um, as well as an at-grade planter towards the north side of that. Um, zooming out for a second, so as we continue to work towards the river, uh, we have a significant, uh, use of planters and terrace seating along that player drive. That's to provide privacy to that player drive, but also to create that activation along the Riverwalk as well. Areas for people to sit, introducing a lot of planting and landscape within that area. It also ties into the building architecture as well. So again, more detail shown here. And that aesthetic and type of planter continues across the Riverwalk. So we see them against the perimeter edge of the building as well, where we don't have any entries, or for example, the glazing at the retail towards the north. As we move into that area, we also have here, uh, this would be a concrete, um, curved bench element that frames that retail plaza space that we have on the north. Ties into the future grading as well, within that area. As we come back to West Third and onto the clinic sides, we continue that similar aesthetic, um, with the planters, both at the turnaround and drop-off area. And again, utilizing at the bottom here, that transition of landscape from Eagle down to the entry of the clinic program. We've included a number of details across the, the sites with all of these elements. And in terms of the, the plantings, again, a use variety of native, um, native and low maintenance, as well as seasonal interests within there.
What is the retail? What is the retail component at the other end? What is it?
Um, I, I don't think the Cavs have fully determined it's a team shop of sorts, though.
And it, does it have an entrance from that side?
Yes.
It does. But we don't know what it is yet.
Yeah, I think the full program hasn't been fleshed out yet. Yeah.
So we have included full details regarding the planting landscape across the sites. Which we'll try to move through.
I'm not sure we need to go through the level of detail? Is there like a final rendering of the?
We do, I think shortly we'll move on to the lighting for the building. That'll be coming up shortly, yeah.
Not sure we should have had the whole thing? You probably should have selected some slides. Is this the whole PDF? Nothing, okay.
To the chair, do you want us to, we can.
Got a lighting, yeah.
So moving into the lighting now, this is for the sides and for the building facades. Um, and this has been a really integral part of this project, creating this, knowing this environment, something that's experiential, can draw people down to this area and to the Riverwalk itself. Believe, yeah. So the, looking here at site plan, looking at the lighting at grade, we have a mixture of, um, of feature lighting. We have uplighting for trees. We also have accent lighting, um, linear horizontal lighting, where we do have seating walls and planters as well. Um, looking towards the east of the building, we do have building-mounted functional lighting for that service area, low down on the building, not particularly visible from Eagle or New Roadway in the future either. Uh, we've also coordinated on, on the use of lighting pedestrian and also parking with public realm, two city standards, um, as shown here. Moving into the building lighting, um, we have two main strategies for the upper portion of the building facade. Um, the first, we start to see on the west elevation at the top of the page, we have a series of custom light fixtures that are located between every blade that we have on that building facade, so along the curtain wall at the top. And that has been fabricated to have a similar profile as the top of the blade as well. Those light fixtures have a series of reflectors that will create uniform light shining onto each of those blades, all the way to the 30 foot or so maximum that we have. So it will have this uniform effect, really highlighting that building feature. As we move, um, across more so onto the east elevation, um, and also wrapping around to the south of the training facility here, where we have those red vertical moments shown. Those are articulated panels where we're creating a cove for these linear vertical light elements, um, to really kind of create that activation, particularly along Eagle, coming down towards the sides. And we'll see some more renderings of that. So looking here, this is the view, this would be almost above the river, looking at that facade. We've taken a lot of care to be as realistic as possible here in terms of understanding which lighting within the building is likely to be activated as well. Uh, but you can really see the blades, how those begin to shine and light, um, the, the kind of that form and motion across the building. We see the red, so along the Riverwalk where we have the form liner concrete, we have down lighting, um, that's color changing as well. So that's color changing. As we move towards West Third, Eagle Avenue, we have that lighting within the, underneath that performance space. Again, that's colored lighting as well, and we can see that a little bit more in this next view. So we're achieving this look by having a series of uplighting, which is located along the north side of Eagle Avenue at grade. So that is shining upwards to create lighting onto the curved portion and the vertical portion of that soffit. We then have additional light fixtures onto the wall on the other side of Eagle. So those are located really to, to shine across that horizontal surface. So we get that lighting, that color-changing lighting across entirety of that soffit without it necessarily shining onto the roadway. We then also have a series of recessed fixtures directly over the roadway, and those provides, um, ample coverage, um, in terms of the lighting and, and requirements for the roadway itself. We've also taken care in terms of understanding private and, and public access to those light fixtures as well.
I think you can go through the renderings more quickly and kind of just show us.
Yeah. Um, so this is another key one, along Eagle Avenue. We see that lighting, um, that entry portal really through in towards the river. And we also see that series of, uh, vertical lighting elements across that facade. Uh, here, very quickly, just looking at fire access across the sites and turning around, uh, a vehicular circulation.
Um, so I think we'll turn it over to staff for, you might want to hand them one of those mics down, um, kind of fairly quickly to give us your recommendations, um, and thoughts.
Sounds good. I think Evelyn's getting us moved up to that section. Um, what I'm going to go through essentially is what, uh, um, you know, comments from design review, the conditions made there, um, and the incorporation of some of the staff comments. Um, just as a preview to that, um, you know, committee member Krista Bissarchek really talked a lot about having a zero-grade crossing across the Cavs driveway. Um, and it seemed as though everyone, uh, agreed that that was feasible, um, at that time. Committee member Soltis also commented on, uh, differentiating the pedestrian and bicycle zones a little bit, uh, more clearly. Um, thank you, Evelyn. And, um, so I'll just point out what, uh, um, what they were describing there. So, starting with.
Pardon me, Dan, could you be clear? Which, which component are you talking about?
Yeah, so we're starting with schematic, and then I'll move right into final.
Schematic for?
Public realm.
Public realm. Okay, so we'll be clear.
Yep. Yeah, so this is schematic public realm.
It's possible to focus on the things that they are not doing. So if they've agreed to something and showed it, don't, we don't need to hear it. Do you understand? Like, focus on what there might be not resolution on.
Sounds good, yeah. So the, the team is already, um, committed to this, uh, this condition. Um, we've also talked about the access across this drive. The team is committed to a zero-grade crossing there. This just highlights how that, um, how that would function, making sure that we have ADA accessibility across those drives. Um, very similar, if you've been to East Fourth, of what the zero grade looks like. Um, talking about traffic and safety concerns, congestion concerns coming out of the drive. Um, this is where we're asking the team to essentially align their driveways further south, uh, to the right of the page, um, to make that, um, you know, coming and going out of that entrance a lot smoother from a congestion standpoint and just a safety standpoint for bicyclists coming down that hill, um, and people turning off of Eagle Avenue. Um, there's a number of conflict points. Um, this will be one of the, uh, best protected bike lane areas in the city when it's built. And so we just want to make sure we, uh, get it as safe a, as we can. Um, and then looking at, can we minimize some of those driveway whiffs? Uh, they're showing 24 and 26 here. Um, we've been in, uh, discussions with fire about minimizing at least the 24 down to 12. Um, it may be that 26, uh, has to stay as is, but that the 30-foot may come down.
These are things they're going to explore, whether it's possible in this next phase? Okay.
Correct. And then finally, with the schematic, um, we're just looking for images of the bridge coming at final, just so that we can really understand the impact, um, in the city. It's not often that we build new bridges in the city. Um, so just understanding from different angles what this, uh, bridge will look like um, and how it relates to Gateway and that prominent location that that is. You know, we've seen all this before, but just to note that some of the other, um, bridges through Gateway do, um, really, you know, simply, um, but I think elegantly sometimes show, um, that prominence. And even connecting to the towpath trail, there's a theme here about the, the style of design that I think could be employed. Um, obviously, as a city of bridges, um, you know, um, being iconic is, I think, uh, something that we're pushing for. Um, when it comes to the final site and lighting, uh, review, the committee, um, simply applied one additional condition in, in addition to the staff comments, um, looking at, uh, studying the, the parking lot itself for a one-way angled parking setup to provide more space for pedestrians and, uh, green infrastructure. Just as, uh, a note to that, we're really talking about areas like this where pedestrians have clear pathways through, um, the parking lots and then enough space for green infrastructure to take place or more green space to take place. So I'm going to motor through these quickly, but similar projects where renovations have occurred to parking lots, um, permeable pavers, um, bioinfiltration, um, you know, native plants. I think they've covered a lot of that well, but then all of that's built into, um, these designed and engineered systems for green infrastructure. And that was something that, um, was applied, um, as a condition prior was to, um, up the ante with stormwater and green infrastructure. Um, so that's something that we're still, um, pushing for at this phase. And getting a, a view at what those prioritized pedestrian areas could, could look like. And also those bioinfiltration areas, um, seasonal color, um, screening, uh, things of that nature that really do a fabulous job of, um, both aesthetically but also functionally for, um, uh, sustainability. I'll, I'll move through this quickly, but this also received Sustainable Sites Award, similar in, in climate and, and scope in that it's a green roof system, um, built in. Got sites certified as well. Very similar to LEED but with landscapes. Um, and that's something that really, um, was referred to in the MDP that the commission adopted earlier this year. Um, talking about sites certification, uh, green infrastructure, water conservation, um, permeable pavers, things like that.
But was this proposed as a condition?
Well, committee did, um, push for a, uh, or add a, a condition to study the parking lot further.
But this is final approval, so how, how are you guys thinking about that?
Deck, do you want to do it? For the parking lot?
Yeah, so we, we had through the design process, looked at having the angled parking and, and utilizing more pedestrian flow through there. Uh, we were finding significant reductions in the spaces that we need required for the clinic, up to about 30%, uh, which didn't, wasn't really feasible with the requirements for the programming of the building and the needs in those locations.
And, uh, to the chair, just as a, a point of clarification, the request in design review is that we submit that previous study that Tom, so that Tom Zarfus could see the study that we had already done.
Okay. What study was that?
The angled parking study.
Oh, the angled parking study, got it. What about the stormwater materiality?
Yeah, I mean, we can actually talk about that. Um, I would say, do you want to do part and I'll do part? Um, I would, uh, so the master plan is in the final throes of obtaining LEED for a community. Um, it's just, yeah, it's all together. We can do, yeah, we can do it however you want, yeah. It's just quite a bit.
But I meant, like, are you willing? The answer is like, will you be doing?
Yes, so in the appendix of this presentation is all the stormwater management that is already included in the project. Um, and in addition, the building is, I mean, and I know this is not the parking lot, but together as the project is considered, um, the building is at LEED Silver. And then do you want to talk about the additional method or efforts that we've made?
Yep. So, uh, in addition to the building being LEED Silver, the, uh, entire master plan is seeking Silver certification for LEED cities and communities. And while green infrastructure and permeable pavers are a portion of that, so is the tree canopy, soil condition, mobility aspects. So we are through all of those sustainable site strategies, achieving those categories. We did look at bioswells for this parking lot. The best place to locate them would be on the page south side of the parking lot. In that zone are the old foundations for the previous highway ramp that was here. Uh, and there's, there's no capacity there. So even if we were to dig out a bioswell and put it there, there's not enough filtration capacity. So instead, the site is directing the stormwater to an underground filtration system. So it is a form of green infrastructure. It's not visible on the site, but it is doing. So it is a form of green infrastructure. It's not visible on the site, but it is doing the same types of things. And we are also investing in high caliber trees, high caliber soils. The trees are between four and six inch calipers. They're much higher than the standard.
Thank you. Right, commission members?
I'll say two, so two, two thoughts on the right away side of it. One, really a question on the West Third rendering. Are you burying the power lines on the one side of the street? Or are we just not showing power lines and renderings again? Because there was, there were some trees on that south west side of the street, but I think there's power lines there.
Yes, we are planning to underground the trees on that side of, the lines.
Okay.
The lines on that side of the street.
And then the other one is something to consider, just the, and if it's not feasible for a reason I don't quite understand, I accept that as an answer. But the cycle track being on the east side, I would actually think it's more intuitive on the west side of the street for two reasons. One, or three reasons. One, if you're coming up West Third, you're pointed directly at the Riverwalk instead of having to do two crosses. Two, if you're coming down Eagle Avenue down the hill, I'm a little worried that people at speed are going to start taking that turn. And there's going to be people coming the other direction and then there's going to be a driveway exit. And that there's just going to be opportunities for people to bash into each other. But if they're causing the cycle track to cross the street, does that create a safer condition for pedestrians and cyclists as they're interacting? The third one is if you're in Tremont, really the most direct path downtown is down West Third. But right now it's a very uninviting experience. So I think most people come up and over the bridge. The, if the cycle track were on the other side of the street, it's on the same side of the street as where the tow path is across the river further down. And you would be not having to cross where Canal and West Third come together where there's a lot of industrial traffic. You would just be on the side of the street that's not interfacing with that intersection. So.
I'm impressed.
So if it's, so if it's, and I want the city to think about how we extend the facility all the way down at least until like Jefferson and over there, so that people from Tremont and the tow path, if there's, if this is going to be at some point in the future, the location of the scenic railroad station, there's going to be people wanting to bike board and get onto the tow path. And it just seems that maybe on the other side of the street, interface is better with the tow path connection about three quarters of a mile down the street. So just something, something to think through if it's thinkable.
This is Chair of the Councilmen. I will speak to 50% of what you said and I am duly impressed and appreciate your advocacy. The project, you might recall, actually originally had the bike facility on the west side of West Third. And I can now say for many of the reasons, if not all immodestly, that you mentioned. Through extensive and iterative discussions with the city, it was determined the city wanted to see the facility on the east side. And that was in conversation with a number of departments. So I'll defer to Linda on where the process went from that point.
Yeah, we, we engaged the mobility team, we engaged traffic engineering, the engineering staff. We looked significantly at the existing traffic down there, which happens to be unfortunately heavy trucks carrying bulk materials. And right at that southern end, right before the West Third Street lift bridge is a major point for lavage for their trucks going in and out. And as we looked at this more and more, we realized from a safety perspective, because we also have the material handling, handling coming out of Midcontinent Coal and Coke. It made more sense. It was, would be safer from a bike perspective to have it on the east side. But it was, it was probably a good six month debate. I, I mean, we were going back and forth between city departments, so.
Okay. Well, and, and maybe there's a, a middle ground where we're trying to avoid lavage, but then we're trying to avoid Canal and West Third. And at some point, at some point cyclists are going to want to cross West Third if they're trying to get to Tremont and the tow path. So I think the question is where does that occur? Does that occur on this side of the lift bridge, that side of the lift bridge? Let, let's, I think that's for us to figure out, but I, I, I still am concerned though about people coming down the hill at speed. And especially since the purpose of a cycle track is to take people who are maybe less confident bikers and get them on bikes. I'm going to like bring my six-year-old down a hill and he's going to wipe out. Yeah. So, so it's, that's, and maybe that speaks to the concerns that designer view brought forward about the driveway apron and the width and the location. So, so let's, let's continue to talk about that, I guess. And last comment is really just a comment on a thought on the lighting is we've, the lighting's really impressive. But I don't think there's been a lot of visualization of what it looks like to be up on the Lorraine Carnegie Bridge looking down. And like, what is the rooftop lighting? And is that, that's also sort of a, that, that, that's, that's a, a angle of the building that's going to be kind of prominent since it's down in the flats. And is there something you'd want to do to the rooftop that also kind of draws out the building? So just a thought. I don't know what that is. Just do it. So.
It's a good point. And I think one of the things that we have learned is with this space having been fallow now for decades, that the views as we've considered them, you know, admittedly have been primarily north looking onto the rooftop, especially when we were going through the building approvals, but certainly have understood the view from Lorraine or from the south looking north. So we, we have tried to the, to the best of kind of a rendering and narrative ability, done a 360, but your point is well taken.
To continue the, the councilman's comments on lighting, has there been any coordination with the folks downtown? Especially considering the nature of the facility, like special event lighting that can coordinate with all the new lighting that's in Public Square along the buildings and so forth. And also I think some of the Celix fixtures showed kind of a stencil light. Is that just for the presentation? Or are you actually looking at some of those things as well?
Which light fixture?
The light fixture along the, the bike path, one of the fixtures, at least the image showed kind of this graphic on the ground. Is that something that's actually going to be implemented or is that just for the presentation?
No, that was, that's a photo of the fixture, but we haven't investigated whether we can put any sort of projection on them. Pulled out, just hasn't been considered. So.
I think if it's possible, we're probably need to move on. It's 11 o'clock. So what I'm going to ask is that we make four separate motions. There, obviously on the schematic, there is still work that can be done between all of you. I think the most clear one needs to be the final approval and the two, the two, two vacations. So.
Are there three straight, street vacations? And we still have a presentation for those.
Thank you. So someone want to go through them? I'm okay if we don't see them. I mean, they're just street vacations for the project. So I, and we know that they're old ones that need to be done. Sometimes we would have actually seen these in administrative approval. So I'm fine with it. Unless you guys want to go through them. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to try. There's a lot of, a lot of information here. I'm going to start with the public realm schematic motion. I move to approve schematic design as presented for public realm with the strong conditions that they, they look at and consider and obviously implement shifting those drives towards the intersection and address the safety and congestion at that intersection of West Third and Eagle. Also, that the condition, when you come back, that you provide ample renderings or, or sections that identify how that bridge engages above the hill and in a sort of traverses down to, to Eagle and at West Third.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further additions or comments? I mean, obviously for me, just if you guys are going to continue to work together, there's a whole lot to work out. We'll see it final. And we can go in and out of what, how you address these issues. Okay, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And slave?
Yes.
For the final site and lighting, I move to approve the presentation as presented with the caveat that the applicant provide justification for how, of how they studied Eagle parking on the site to increase pedestrian flow and also increase landscaping and other green infrastructure. That they continue to pursue obviously lead certification and demonstrating what other site related items impact the overall development. I think that's, oh, and Charlie indicated that consideration be given to how the rooftops might be lit relative to what we might see from the bird's eye view above.
Are you okay if they go to staff with these?
Sure.
Yeah. Come back here. Just get it stepped.
Yes. And you know, obviously this, you guys have been a good partner. So I would assume that continued collaboration and partnering on these activities will continue. Okay.
So this is final approval. We'll need a second. I'll go back to staff with these kind of both justifications and any modifications.
A second.
Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slave?
Yes.
Okay, there's three more connected. Resilience, there's a resolution that was introduced by council members McCormick, Bishop and Harrison to vacate a portion of West Third. That's Resolution 956. I move to for approval.
Second.
Motion on the second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And slave?
Yes.
Next resolution, item number five, nine, five, seven. I move to approve declaring the intent to vacate a portion of West, another portion of West Third Street, which consists of approximately 0.3451 acres.
Second.
Motion on the second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slave?
Yes.
And Resolution 958 introduced by said council folks from previous resolutions declaring the intent to vacate another portion of West Third that consists of 2.2990 acres.
Second.
Motion, a second, call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And slave?
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you. Sorry for the speed. Next time we'll have more time. It's just so much on the agenda. But you guys are doing amazing, amazing work. And I love the renderings, by the way. Super beautiful. All right, we're going to page 16, Design Review 2025-038, Otman Garage Demolition. This was for final approval. It was approved at local with the recommendation that the parking lot be ceded. And that the applicant return, this would be to staff with a plan for the paved parking lot in design or for review by the design review committee, but it could go to local versus here. So do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you show answers to the penalty perjury?
Thank you.
Just hit the green button.
I do.
And by the way, there are two, because the, the next item, which is on page 17, it's here. Or is this?
We, we are requesting two motions.
Two motions. So.
Madam Chair.
I'm just the, the, the comment. Well, you want to go ahead and explain this?
Yes, Madam Chair, we recommend that you handle these as two separate cases, just because of how the code is structured and where authority lies within Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Dan will walk through the details and nuances of that, but for that reason, we're treating the demolition and grading and seeding as one motion for the commission to consider, and then the surface lot as a second separate motion.
Okay. Okay. So we'll do them separately. Go ahead.
Sure. Good morning. Jen Diazio on behalf of Geis Companies. I am not Brandon Klein for better or worse.
Thanks a lot.
Oh. Okay. Otman Garage, between Prospect and Bolivar, it's a kind of a little bit of surface parking ramp, two-story structure between the Ameritrade Garage and Carter Manor. Geis Companies acquired this as part of the entire Cuyahoga County Nine Development. It was not in great shape when we purchased it. We have done minimal structural repairs that are not faring well. In 2023, Building Department reached out and flagged us. We closed the garage. We've closed the garage. And it is presently not usable. We attached a current structural assessment, basically saying it, it should be torn down, cost prohibitive to repair and millions of dollars if we were to save the structure, you know, for a handful of parking spaces. As evident in these photos, though, this not so safe structure is being occupied by neighborhood folks and obviously our desire to get the building down with a little more urgency. Existing plan, so the 15, 16 spaces on the north side are the surface lot, the ramp kind of in the center. The existing parking for first floor. We do have some existing street trees and fencing on the Prospect side. I don't believe anything really exists on the Bolivar side from a streetscaping second story. Okay, existing views from, from the directions. Not, not a very pretty structure. So what happens next on this site after demo has, has kind of been the subject of debate and code review. And I'm sure Dan can speak in code inverse, but it's our understanding, right? Because of the district we're in, surface parking as a new use is not approved. So if we take the structure down, surface parking is not generally permitted. To be compliant, we would retain the existing surface parking on the north and seed the area where the structure was. So this is our first motion to let us proceed more, most importantly, with the demolition of the structure. And to have this plan in place that is code compliant, we would kind of mimic what we have on Prospect on the Bolivar side, just for a little streetscaping and separation. And the small inset photo, you can see how that existing parking and the ramp that's there exists today. And option two will present as the second motion.
Can you pass that?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Yeah, just to run through this quickly, staff is fully supportive of the demolition. Essentially, we're working with the applicant to swiftly move ahead. So we recommend approval today so that they can secure their demo permit. The, as you mentioned, the downtown flats just ask that they come back with whatever the future design is.
Any question?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the demolition at nine forty-four Prospect.
Can you unmute, please?
Yeah, he muted me, but go ahead.
My microphone wasn't on. I, I make a mo, I move to approve the demolition DF 2025-38 of the Otman Garage at nine forty-four Prospect.
Nice second.
We have a motion, a second. There's a question here.
I, just for clarification. Because I'm a little confused. So this is, they're establishing a new parking lot?
That's a separate motion. So we'll go over that next. This is simply for the demolition.
So we're still on item number thirty-eight?
We're just doing the demolition.
All right, I was confused because it was kind of mixed together. All right, never mind.
So we have a motion on the second. Let's call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And slave?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next item is 2025-039. This is the establishment of a surface lot. Go ahead.
So we, we have prepared an alternate here, which presently is not zoning compliant, but takes the area we would be required to seed. but takes the area we would be required to cede and makes it surface parking lot similar to the existing use that is there now. Working with staff, we've proposed not fencing this separately and creating that connector on the south so pedestrians can get from Prospect to Bolivar without cutting through the parking lot. You know, presented at Design Review and there were thoughts both ways, but some of it was, you know, this is a situation where the ceded lot may not make the most sense if we're already having squatters and things like that on this property, creating a ceded lot without much planning thought, cityscape to it, might create a situation not favorable. And so surface parking may be the best solution for a temporary. And just to reiterate, you know, Geis is not, does not want to be in the business of maintaining and managing parking lots. We would sure prefer to develop this site. We have been marketing, we do market this site, but opportunities are just pretty sparse for this parcel. So long-term intent certainly to have a development here, not a parking lot. However, in taking the structure down, we feel this is the most appropriate solution.
Jeff, what's the staff comment on that? And what did they do? It says the same motion, so it doesn't, what was written here doesn't make sense.
That's why I was confused.
Yeah, so it's, it says that, is this the wrong motion?
So.
Well, I'll let you say what they were because these are the ones from the previous.
Yeah, I think that's just a typo.
Yeah, so, and we talked through some of the, we essentially conducted a training with you guys a couple of weeks ago on what this code really states. And really, Design Review only saw that segment of the project, the demo and reseeding. In the meeting, the applicant did request to follow the process to get to BZA, which requires them to present this to CPC. And I'll walk through kind of what our role is. I think the background was covered really well, I know we're short on time, so I'm going to really skip through this quickly. Let me just bounce a couple ahead. This is just historical, so this should look familiar to the training that we did. Essentially, the point of the code here, three forty-nine fourteen, is to preserve the urban architectural character of the most intensely developed portions of downtown by limiting the establishment and expansion of surface parking lots within these districts. It's within the designated district, in this case, it's the Gateway District shown in pink there. Surface parking lots are defined within the code and that they are prohibited in these areas unless they come to the commission for these four, to hit one of these four criteria. Yeah, and, oh, thank you, Evelyn, we're going to jump forward to skip some slides just to speed this up. But essentially, there's four options that the commission can approve a surface parking lot of this type. The first is a temporary lot that requires a development plan, we don't have one today. The second is an accessory parking facility that has to be for a new use that has not yet been completed. We also need a development plan associated, and we don't have that today either. The project is not within an action area and it was not a vacant lot in ninety-seven. So really, the commission's authority just doesn't, the applicant is not providing information for the commission in order to make a motion here. So we're really saying two recommendations. The first would be to postpone and allow the applicant time to pull together development plans to meet either option one or option two, or to deny because we don't have the information from the applicant to really make a motion based on those four criteria, which then the applicant could proceed to BZA, and they've indicated that they'd like to do that.
Oh, the recommendation is from staff is to not deny.
Correct.
Okay. Correct. I got it.
Okay, well, we're going to make it quick. I'm gonna move to postpone. Item number DF twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, Ottman Surface Lot Establishment, with the understanding that the applicant is going to identify which one of the four criteria that they choose to pursue and provide applicable information to support it.
I will second and just add that the developability of the site may become more advantageous upon demolition, like do, do you want to install a parking lot only for it to be ripped out within a year because it's a developed site, so it's something worth thinking through, so.
Okay.
Um, okay, so I have a motion to postpone. And a second, is there any further discussions?
Madam Chair, if I may clarify for the applicant, I think our request would be if you're willing to postpone and then come back with a redevelopment approach that would allow Planning Commission to approve a temporary surface lot, understanding that you are seeking eventual redevelopment.
Um, yeah, it puts us in a little hardship because there is no present opportunity to redevelop.
Right.
So the postponement could be a while in which the ceded lot would remain and then we would not then go to BZA.
We understand.
The redevelopment plan only needs to be conceptual in nature, so even if it's something that's conceptual and you're working in good faith to market a new development dislocation, they can at least give you that temporary one-year lot, and then after that first year, if you're still working in good faith to get it, there's the opportunity for an extension and then a variance rather than, or if the other, the only other option is if they don't choose to postpone for that, it's free will to deny, and then we go to variance to seek a variance for, to use the lot permanently as a surface lot.
A motion, a second. And I would ask you to call the roll.
Yes.
Slide, put this back here. Anthony.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
And slide.
Yes.
I can certainly come back and, since we postponed and, you know, come back with a different proposal here because this postponement means you can come back in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair. Real quick, so that you all have an application and for a building permit for the demolition. The demolition was approved here today from the zoning perspective, we can go ahead and approve that. And you come back if you decide to use the lot for surface parking and it goes back to this planning commission, you'll just submit a new permit, that way we're not stopping you from having, being able to demolish the garage.
Sounds good. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is two zero two five dash zero two one, Union at Cleveland Harbor. Five four five five, not marginal. And. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and everything?
Yes.
Since this is conceptual, we're going to see you again. I have to move really fast.
We're going to move as fast as possible, yes. So thank you very much, my name is Joyce Skidmore, I'm with the Annex Group, this is Union at Cleveland Harbor. I don't know. Go ahead. There we go. It is a little delayed. So with me here today is RDL Architects, they're our architecture partner, and I believe online is Jeff with Riverstone as well, so our civil engineer can answer any questions as well. So a little bit, just real quick about the Annex, we are primarily an affordable housing and workforce housing developer. We have about forty-two communities that are either in development or operational and/or under construction. We're in, I think, around twenty-nine states, although that seems to be growing every day. We do have a student housing group as well, that's where we started, we've moved primarily into affordable housing and doing affordable housing and workforce housing across the country. We also have a sister nonprofit company that supports all of our workforce housing developments. This is Impact Housing Corp., so they're responsible for putting together tenant services plans for our communities, they facilitate food pantries, they facilitate literacy classes, all of those things, they work with nonprofits that are local in order to provide those services to our tenants. I'm going to turn it over to.
This is your first project in Cleveland?
It is. Yes. To RDL to go through.
That's RDL.
Yeah.
So here we're showing the context for our site, which is located approximately at five four five five North Marginal. We're just responding to the linear context along the lake. This includes marinas, which are shown in blue, parks in green, and a residential neighbor, which is the Shoreline Apartments. Here we have our site, which is approximately four acres, which is in the bold outline. It's zoned for multifamily, and then the park to the east is owned by the City of Cleveland. And then there are some challenges to the site, significantly the grade to the east of the site, which is in the right-of-way, we have poor soils conditions, we also have height limitations because of our proximity to Burke Lakefront Airport, so we're capped at fifty-seven feet, so we have a maximum of five stories. But all of these, we're addressing with our design. Here's just some photos showing kind of a relatively flat site, aside from that east side along North Marginal, you can see the Shoreline Apartments, and there's also very limited lake views from North Marginal, the road itself. We're showing here, there's not many trees that we'll be removing, but our proposed plan is going to provide at least double the amount of trees that are there now. And then to the east, along an existing service access, we're maintaining that, and that's going to be a secondary emergency access, and we're planning to protect the trees that are along that hillside during construction. So early on in the process, we had discussions with the fire department and reviewed with them, they require at least two points of access and they want access to the north part of the project, so we're providing access at the main entrance and that service entrance, as well as maintaining that north access, north of the building. Highlighted here in yellow are those provided routes. So back in May, we had an informal review with the Design Review Board. We submitted this plan, which is five-story apartment building, we had two hundred nineteen units, and we're providing one-to-one parking. Their major concerns here were that we were providing too much parking to the north of the building and that there were not enough views given to the lake. So we've worked this out, and in June, we resubmitted, or we submitted to the Design Review Board addressing these concerns. We started by shifting the east wing north and rotating it up to give more views to the residents of the lake. This also created a green forecourt to the north, and we have amenities along there, including a greenway, playground, and gazebo area. This also connects to that park to the east, and importantly, this significantly reduced the number of parking spaces that was, was north of the building, we had one hundred before, and now it's down to seventeen, so we eliminated over eighty parking spaces that was north of the building before. This also creates a good connection to the greenway and to that bike trail that is proposed. And so. Overall, with this design, we got approval with the Design Review with strong support, and we wanted to come to Planning Commission, however, staff wanted us to meet with City Real Estate and work through a few more items, so I'll turn it over to Joy for those.
Thanks. So we met with City Real Estate, and this is specific to the vacated right-of-way that is east, I guess, plan east of the project there. So their recommendation is that, was that we removed the east half, that we removed parking from the east half, because that was not previously approved in the previous development that was approved. So we modified that, resubmitted to hopefully come to you guys for review, showing just parking in the west half. Staff then recommended that we go back to City Real Estate and talk to them about the park improvements that were also included with the use of this right-of-way. And so we did that, and we received those improvements from the seller, who is also here and negotiated that previous development, and so we added those to our site plan and resubmitted again, showing those park improvements, almost exactly as was what they were on the previous agreement. And so we have parking on the west half of the vacated right-of-way there, we have the park improvements, you know, as Calvin said, we, you know, did significant modification to increase the views, so like, he'll go through that here in just a minute, and reduce that parking as much as we could, also adding our site amenities, we moved those so that they were closer to the lake, so we have a playground there to the north, plan northwest, and we also are proposing a gazebo, you can see that there as well. So we have added some site amenities or relocated them so they're between the lake and the building, and so those residents can take advantage of those amenities while being right next to the lake.
I mean, so you're just keeping what was approved so that you can move more quickly and not have to renegotiate everything and doing it the same, is that correct?
It's the site plan, I mean, so it's a different site plan, right? It's a different unit count, I mean, yeah.
The requirements.
The east half. Yes, exactly. So we're requesting approval of this plan, but staff has conditioned that upon going back to City Real Estate and working through the lease amendment and the project agreement and making sure that we can get those amendments completed.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to quickly go through the cool stuff, the architecture.
And part of that, when we, when we moved parking from the other half of the eastment, we did reduce the unit count and parking count from two hundred and nineteen to two hundred and nine.
Okay. So here's.
Sorry, I wanted to also add, we are, we have submitted to OFA, we were required to submit by eight fourteen, and so in trying to negotiate all of this, we did reduce that unit count that was submitted to OFA, but we are at two hundred and nine, and our Lytec consultant strongly discouraged us from going under that now that our proposal is in with OFA.
Got it. So just real quick, this is affordable housing?
It is an affordable housing project, correct?
Okay.
Okay.
So here we have our updated plan, showing a mixture of different unit types, as well as our common space, which is located centrally and gives views to that northern forecourt and the lakefront. You can see a visual of that northern forecourt, which is also the emergency, or the fire department access that's required, it's going to be overflow parking that might be permeable pavers, so it's more of a greenway there. And then here, we, you can see that we gave a majority of the units views to the lakefront, how reshifting that building maximizes lakefront views for the residents. Here's just some themes that we were looking at, some colors and some design concept inspiration, and then massing studies for the building as well. And then finally, you can see the project that's still in progress with our design, but offering a lot of those great amenities along the lakefront and really listening to the comments that we received and really trying to address it, and we're really excited for this project, so thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, thanks for the quick presentation.
The last thing I would add is that we have strong support with our OFA application, we did receive a support letter from the mayor, we received a support letter from Councilman Harrison and from the county council, so they're all in full support of this project.
I have a couple comments and observations and maybe questions. First and, I think this, this particular site's a perfect candidate for a multi-purpose trail around the entire perimeter of this building. And I think it would, I mean, you're cramming two hundred and, well, more than two hundred and nine, two hundred and nine units, and you know, one thing I always think about when I think about affordable housing, I see myself as being privileged, we're all pretty privileged in this room, we can get on a plane, we can go downtown and eat, but when you don't provide enough amenities on site for those who don't have the mobility or the means, or disposable income that we do, I think we're shortchanging ourselves. I think this is a horrible site for an affordable building project, or if OFA thinks it is, that's great, there's no, I mean, there's no, there's no, there's nothing around here. You can't go to the store, you can't go anywhere, you have to either get in the car, you know, or take the bus. Now, good luck with RTA, I saw the comment here, you know, with everything being cut and the stress on public transportation around the country, we'll be hard-pressed. So I, again, God bless you, you can pull this off, and God bless. So I I, again, God bless you, you can pull this off and God bless OFA for even considering this being in the census tract and and having the amenities that they normally require. I just had to say that. And how is this, I said one question, is this considered a family? Or what's it, what's it, we're going to?
It's a one, two and three, so it would be a family.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I I disagree. I actually think the site is giving such an exceptional site. Views to the water, connection to the trail, adjacent to another development, this density. I actually think it's a great site. And I think it's, it it it, if it, it came to us as a kind of high end development. And I think that residents would love to be here on the lake, to have the recreational uses, to have access to the water, eventually cheers coming here. This is the future and giving residents of all affordability access to what is coming here and Gordon Park and everything else. I I totally disagree with you and.
We can agree to disagree.
We can agree to disagree. Of course we can.
I mean, just because they're near water doesn't mean that it's going to be great.
Well, it's a great development and everything that's coming and planning here.
In most people's relationship in the African American community, relationship to water is not a great one. So that's a whole nother conversation.
Kind of a throwaway comment and then a suggestion. The pet waste area that's way on the other side of the parking lot, no one's going to walk over to that in February when it's windy. So there should be, I think, a pet amenity on the other side of the building here where there's with the building acting as a windbreak, because that's where everyone's pets going to go to the bathroom in the winter. The, on the RTA point, the final destination of the seventy eight bus, which goes up and down West one hundred and seventeenth Street, is the Witten Place Apartments. The number, I think the best option is to try to convince RTA to shift the layover for the number two, which is over by the Fox Eight Studios, to here. If if you're going to actually create RTA access and that might need to include physical space and like how you're going to accommodate coach buses coming in and where they park and everything. Because if this is the actual destination of the route, then it does become much more RTA connected versus having to even just walk over to fifty fifth. So.
To Commissioner Fluker's comments, I think there are showing a little bit more amenities that are outside. At least what's shown in the render, the gazebo and the playground area. They're showing some things to the east, some kind of seating areas and such. One thing that I'm I'm not fairly sure on is like, again, how much of this amenity is appropriate for the unit count? I still think it's 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 under amenitized. If if if, just looking at the site plan with regards to the amount of spaces and the quality of spaces out there, I think kind of a playground, a small playground like directly adjacent to northwestern winds on Cleveland along the lake is probably a brutal, pretty kind of brutal condition. And kind of there's some kind of berms on the east side, potentially looking at kind of continuing that landscape typology to provide some respite along the along the the lake itself. I do think like potentially addition additional trails. You have like a considerable land on the east side to maybe do some kind of loop trail along there as well. You're connecting access to the south, but I think, you know, again, with the unit count, kind of thinking more along the lines of what are outdoor amenities can be possible and potentially thinking about, you know, I know this is your own development, how that can link to the the your neighbors on the west side as well.
I do have a quick staff report to 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 comment on some of these. Can you pass over the clicker there? Thank you. Yeah. So the easements were picked up as part of the committee's conditions. RTA, the applicant did meet with already, looking to now help construct a transit stop up at fifty fifth, but I love that recommendation. We did discuss some of the layover, but not relocating it. So thank you so much, Councilman, for that. They did ask for a convenience amenity be provided, which really was trying to address some of Commission Member Fluker's comments about just access. And I I just want to add that I find this whole conversation very validating because we've had the same discussions in as staff, as well as, you know, just generally just thinking about how this site operates. It is very isolated and but at the same time, as as city staff, we're trying to bring affordability to the lakefront. We're doing so at North Coast, we're doing so at the riverfront. It's a very hard process to do that successfully. And so we understand the nuance of, you know, really trying to support affordable housing, but trying to do so in a way that provides the amenities that folks need. And and this has been a conflicting conversation, I think, even for us. I did want to point out all of these lease agreements that Joy was referring to. There was original agreements. The project did come through this commission back, I think, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, maybe even into twenty twenty. Certainly, that full area at the north to the lake was shown as an amenity space. And so from a staff perspective, we don't support parking on the lakefront. We really want to see high quality amenities up there, regardless if it's, you know, a market rate project or a Lytech project. We feel confident that those seventeen remaining spaces, we can find room in the right of way and maybe with some of the city property that's adjacent to really serve that and keep that off the lakefront. So we're really just asking the commission as a condition of this approval, you know, essentially to have this applicant study that in detail, coordinate with us. We've already reached out to Metro Parks with their trail project and the Commissioner of Traffic about what can be done on the right of way there to accommodate that. And knowing.
Sorry, Dan, interrupt. And and I don't know if this is for you or the applicant. Is there anything when it comes to Lytech that evaluates the ratio that's appropriate? Because I'm, I guess, without sound evidence, my assumption is that parking at the ratio of one to one may not be necessary. And I guess I'm I'm curious if there's any research or data, data to show how many folks that would be eligible for the housing own and have access to transportation versus would be utilizing public transportation or other modes of, you know, walking or other other means.
The lower AMI, the less likely.
That's right. So we do have several projects, like I said, across the country where we are parked at one to one. We do look at each site individually, because as everyone has said, this is somewhat isolated. So we feel like more people will have cars. We've gone down as low as point seven five. We have one project that has no public or no parking at all and just has public parking and a parking garage that people have to pay for. So I mean, it really just depends on where it's located. We feel like this location, while the bus stop is maybe a quarter mile, about a five minute walk away. That's why we're willing to provide the bus shelter there, because we think that's a great thing for our residents and knowing that those who don't have cars don't want to wait in the winter time without, you know, having some sort of shelter. So we've agreed to do that because we think it's a great idea. And we're really excited about the bike path. That's under construction now that, and we're going to provide additional bike storage within the building. So those that don't have cars can utilize bikes and it's a quick bike ride to downtown as well.
I'll just add that we did ask the applicant to really study this because it's the same issue, like isolation begets a need for a car. But knowing that you have particular interest in obviously affordable, but also elderly and disabled populations who typically have less cars generally. You know, we're sort of in that zone of which way do we go? So I think studying that, I think, is appropriate.
Just, you know, I just want to echo with my two fellow commission members that identify public transportation. That's great, okay? But just because a bus comes to a point, doesn't mean it runs frequently enough. So it's not just getting the the transportation there. How frequently is it running? This is critically important.
Yeah, and the bus does not serve weekends there. So the the further distance would be St. Clair, which is a much further walk.
So now you see where I'm going with this. Thank you.
I'm going to ask that if it's possible, we're going to need a some motion one way or the other because we're running out of time. This is for conceptual approval. And looking at this, it went to local. There were comments and conditions for conceptual. So anybody have a motion one way or the other?
I will move conceptual approval of the union at Cleveland Harbor incorporating the design review recommendations, emphasizing the need to further study RTA connectivity and deep conversations with RTA. Also, I think about frequencies. And and I think also study the kind of consideration with the amount of amenities and also with staff recommendation to locate those seventeen spaces somewhere else on site to preserve amenities on the northern side of the building along the lakefront. Yes, I I am okay with all that.
That addition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second can call to roll. Anthony.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
And Slay.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck with OFA. So the next design review item is Clover Apartments, two zero two four dash zero three one, two zero three three Clover Avenue. This is new construction. This is schematic approval. And there were two conditions to look at reduction of the height and reconfiguration of the parking. Who is here to speak to this matter? If not, we're skipping it. Anybody? Okay, we're going to move on and we can come back to it if we can, because we're running low on time. The next item is design review for our rest, two zero two four dash zero one four. This is at one eight two zero zero Lorraine Avenue. This is new construction for final approval. Anybody here who's presenting to this matter is here online, come up here. And for those of you who are here to speak publicly after they present, I will open it up for public comment. So are you the only two? Is there anyone online? Okay, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury. Okay. Also, I will point out for commission members to take a look at page twenty. It was recommended at local for final approval with like six or seven conditions. So if you could address those two as you as you go through your presentation, thank you.
All right, thank you all. To start with a quick agenda today, we're going to review what we heard last time from the planning commission as part of our presentation. We're going to also dig into the details of campus, wayfinding and signage, lighting, materiality, details, exterior renderings and the landscape and site enhancements. Just again, to orient everybody, we received a schematic design approval back in May. So we're now here for a final approval and we'll have that information about that signage, lighting, materiality that is required by that and also again, address those comments you're asking us to do. Some of those comments from the last time that we found is relative to circulation of wayfinding, warming up the material palette, masking along the rain, garage screening, stairwell at the southeast corner, landscaping around the site and then lighting and photometrics all are included here. And we are addressing those as part of our responses today. And those, some of those responses are actually detailed here. I won't read them all, but it's in the presentation. Real quick orientation for those not aware, we're, a site we're in question is directly across the street from the existing hospital on Lorraine Avenue, so we're just north of that, just east of the Rocky River. The site circulation has not changed since last time. We are still demonstrating the main hospital circulation path for visitors of the existing hospital in the blue to the south of the rain. Then the red represents the traffic going to the new building. In addition, the foot traffic that goes across a bridge that will allow staff, community members, et cetera, to go back and forth across that space in an elevated place across Lorraine. It shows some bus stops there as well, near those entry points of the building. And that was all presented last time, just as again, to reorient. This is the detail of some of those places along on the north side. Red arrows being where public traffic enters the building, vehicular traffic. Blue arrows where more the pedestrian traffic into the building, where we cross Lorraine, where the bus stop is located and near the front door entry of our building. Again, trying to keep all the active spaces on the Lorraine speed street to kind of activate that streetscape along the rain. New information now, signage locations. So what we're showing here are the new locations in the dark blue circles with the white text. The number, the letters represent information on the ground signage and then the numbers represent building signage. The lighter colored bubbles represent replacement signs or updated signs that are already there today. So three signs that are there today that are going to be changed due to new directional signage, et cetera. And then the new site signs around the building that will be additions to what we have today. Those signs, the existing replacement sign, for instance, we see in that it's on the southeast of the site at Old Lorraine and where Rain Connect, where it's going to be replaced, will look similar to what it is today. But you can see an image of what that looks like with both the west and east facing text. And again, double, a new sign across the street from that for traffic going west to kind of help orient to the campus as well. Similar signage. Replacing posts and panel signs that are already there today. Again, just updating the text, this is examples of what that'll look like around the site. Then the building signage located on the south and west elevations, this is eliminated signs that will be located high on the building. But both these signs are neither are facing the neighborhood, they're both facing Lorraine and across the river. So that elimination will not impact visibility from anybody from the community in respect. Light fixtures, there were some concerns about the lighting and photometrics. We do have a photometric study as part of this, but the different light fixtures we're including in the garage are flush mounted to kind of light the surfaces of the travel zones within the parking garage. We have lower roof light fixtures to try to minimize the height of those things, but they, we will showing those on the top of the garage, the parking deck. We are using vegetation to help screen the light. So any objections to light will be helped further screened by the vegetation. We have the mesh around the garage that also helps kind of minimize the light and ex filtration from the building. And then we have additional parking garage elements like the upturned beams at the perimeter. So any headlights will be blocked by those solid elements on the garage, including the lowest level, which is slightly below grade. You can see there at number five, almost hides the cars entirely at that level at the east side. This shows the location of different site lights. So the yellow shows the ballards that kind of highlight the entry points of the garage. Obviously, the roof deck of the garage has lighting. There's some building wall mounted lights around the perimeter of the building at the north northeast. And then there's some additional site lighting. You can see like at the healing garden at the west end of our building. Again, I should have mentioned too, on the garage panel, I forgot to say, is that all those lights in the garage are dimmable. So when the occupancy drops, the lighting levels drop as well. So when we talk about the photometric study here, this is at the brightest level. So this is dim, obviously at certain points. But as a reference point, we're showing a maximum of around ten foot candles. To read a book, you need about thirty to fifty. So the max light level we're showing here, which is the highest level of intensity, is just around eleven. So ten to eleven at the highest point, which is much less, you need to read a book. But this does show is at night, the filtration of our light across the site. You can see at the darker blue, it gets the less and less foot candles there are across the site. So as you go east, there's very minimal, if any, light disruptions to the neighbors. On the north, even there, where it gets a little closer, it still goes pretty much to zero before it crosses outside of the property areas. So we feel like the lighting levels are very appropriate for rat. We also did some additional studies of building materiality. There was, again, some requested investigate some warmer materials and some privacy, et cetera, around the building. So these are now showing the different materials we're proposing, including some warmer precast concrete and brick materials around the building. We still have, we've redetailed and refined the garage screening. We've added some some etching to the glass at the southeast stairwell. And that is to make it less transparent and more translucent. So you won't be able to visually see in and out of that space as easily. This is showing sort of the elevations with the with the building signage, but you can see on the south and north elevations. The north there, you're seeing quite a bit more brick at the base of the building, again, tying that the brick, warmth of the brick to the to the neighborhood context. And again, also the warmer precast colors on that facade as well. And then along Lorraine, we've added some of that warmer precast at the base of the building, again, trying to address the warming up comments. Same on the east. Same on the east side, added a lot more brick to that east side and the west elevation as well. So we've kind of wrapped the building, they have that, uh, sensitivity to it. Here are rendered views, what we're describing. So again, as we're furthest west on the rest of the rain, um, against metals, glass, lasting materials, all, uh, very good quality materials that will endure the test of time. We did add, uh, some planters along that rain that have the precast elements. And we are including, uh, bird reflective glass for safety for bird collision. At the east end of Lorraine with the glass tower, that shows sort of the translucent nature, the acid etching on the stair tower that kind of helps with some of the concerns about that being too translucent or transparent and some privacy concerns. So there's no longer something you can easily, it'll be very, uh, blurred in and out. Uh, we were showing that warmth or warmer material even behind now our two-story lobby space for the entry places. That is now a much more of a warmer space to be, uh, art and that space as well to kind of commit community art to the design. And then the garage screening element in the background with some, um, an open area you see there is for the bike parking access to the site. In the bridge, uh, this, looking down the rain at the bridge element, showing the materiality there. Uh, the bridge, we've decided it is best to keep that very, uh, clean and simple. Uh, the reason for that would be, uh, to keep consistent with the Cleveland Clinic similar bridges they have across their enterprise. Also, we don't want to have a lot of distraction there. That is where you're kind of coming across Lorraine, the Rocky River. Pedestrians will be crossing there. We want people's eyes and attention to be at the ground level, not reading messages and, uh, different things at the bridge level. It might sort of help, uh, make that a little less safe. So again, uh, also has collision, bird collision glass on that. But that cleanliness, that simplicity, we think is in, in line with both the brand and also to help with safety. Bird safe glass strategy, uh, again, we mentioned that we have that now. It's, it's, uh, as a way to prevent birds from flying into glass. We're all aware of that. We're, the places we're going to propose that is diagrammed here. So we have different types of glass indicated. So, um, one of the comments we did receive, um, the far west review was the blue you see on the right-hand diagram, at the bottom, there's a vertical blue strip that we were not providing, uh, bird friend on. We are going to change that based on the comments we received there. So they will have the bird collision glass there. And you see, um, most everywhere around the building, we do have the bird frit to help with that. Brick materiality that we're including, uh, as part of the responses to warm up the palette is a liner panel for the precast. So the brick is set inside of the precast panel, but it's, uh, for, it's a real brick, it's a thin brick, it's tilted up. Um, that is around the building now to kind of address again, the context that we wanted some more materiality that's warmer and respond to some of the materials in the, in the neighborhood. That is around the pace of the garage. And this, again, just shows some of the context, the street views, streetscape as you approach, looking west on Lorraine. Again, the streetscape there, we're, we're going to talk a little about the landscape elements to the right in a little bit. Here you can see again that view there with the bike entrance on the right. Uh, you start to see on the left, just a very little bit of the parking, uh, shelter or the bus shelter we're going to include at the, near the main entry. At the garage entry then, this is what's showing the landscape at day one planting. And then as you move into day five planting or year five planting, this is what the landscape starts to blossom into. Then a full maturity, this is what the height of the trees and plants look like as, as it goes beyond that five-year element. This is the same five-year growth, uh, looking from Alien Court to the south. Again, the full, once the plants come into full maturity, that's what the view will look like. There's also birmingham at that location. So we're also creating some natural berms to kind of help with elevating those plantings. More healing guarding on the west, uh, again, you see some sign amenities benches there. It's a place of respite, it's a place to look over the river. Um, it is kind of a sensitive medical area, so it's a good place for people to come out and kind of reflect and gather their thoughts. But it's a nice element in nature there to help with that. And the view looking down Lorraine, I've seen this before, but it just kind of shows the streetscape context looking east on Lorraine. At night, again, trying to create that inside to outside transition between the streetscape, looking inside the lobby to the warmer colors and some of the artwork inside, um, it becomes more transparent as, you know, obviously his desk comes up there. But again, trying to act, keep that active at night, safe. So you want that light, uh, light and, uh, inside outside relationship, so it doesn't look like a dark corridor. The landscape then, uh, we've always talked about our building being a building in, within a park. So as extension of the metro parks. You can see now our building was surrounded by green space, uh, including the streetscape along Lorraine. We talked about the buffer zone between the neighbors and our building. We have added some streetscape amenities here. And so the bus shelter that's located directly, uh, by the front door on Lorraine. Bike racks inside the garage, inside the garage, the benches you just saw and the healing garden space, the, some of the trash receptacles, planters, the street sign, the streetlights along Lorraine will be the same as they are there today. So those are consistent, number eight, uh, number seven, those, the existing news, the new sight lighting that we're providing matches the existing campus sight lighting and bollards. So that we have a campus feel across both north and south of the campus. We've added, we had, continue to include street pavers so that at places where we want traffic to slow down and, and market entry points and, um, pedestrian crossings, et cetera, we have some more like human scale brick pavers to soften that, uh, feel in the, in the community and for, uh, identification reasons. So relative to the buffers on last time, we had committed to having some meetings with the community, those occurred. What, what is reflected here is the preferred option that, uh, that resulted from those meetings. We have, uh, sort of two bigger green spaces. One on the north is what we're calling a more passive space. That space is not programmed for any real activity. It's there for use for people, uh, you know, impromptu use, but it's no formal active space for that. We're using, um, we call it the meadow edge along the perimeter to kind of reflect some of the natural plantings of the area. Obviously, the perimeter have some nice trees and gardens to help screening from the neighbors. And then along Lorraine trees, uh, on the sidewalk there, we saw a little bit of that view earlier to kind of help with that buffer between Lorraine and the, what we're calling the more active space on keeping that space, the event lawn towards Lorraine, again, trying to keep more active space on Lorraine, more private space towards the north. We're talking about that, uh, edge between the neighbors and our building. We have committed to trying to grow trees between those two spaces as early as we can during construction to allow them to get more grow time before the building becomes active. This shows on the left, we'd have a construction fence, there'd be a planting of trees and a fence that would be included as part of that overall design. That would be, those, those trees would start growing as we're building the building. Once the building is completed, the final stage would be to take the construction fence down and complete the plantings, the meadow edge we talked about in front of those trees to kind of again, help soften that between the two, the neighbors and our property. This is just our artist rendering of what that's, that this is the passive space, again, not intended for any kind of formal activity. It's meant there just for neighbor, uh, users of the building, staff, et cetera, to kind of use at their own leisure, uh, for walking, recreation or respite. Relative to the types of trees around our building, uh, this shows how we're planning on presenting the, the tree types. The darker green circle there represents sort of, uh, the taller trees, again, closest to the building, a hierarchy, so it steps up, obviously those lower plantings in front. But you can see some of the natural, um, native plants, its species, et cetera, that we're planting around the building and some significant quantities. Again, a significant amount of plantings on the north around the building to help shield, we saw those views earlier from Alien Court to help screen the neighbors from the back of the building. We were asked to show a preservation plan of trees, so we are only, we're planning to only take down the trees we need to take down as part of construction. We are going to keep, we're going to replace every tree we take down with more, at least a one-to-one, but probably much more than that. Once you, when you see the mountain trees we're planning on planting. So there are some trees we have to take down for the construction of the project. But we are planning on replacing them with much more than what we're taking down. So the Lorraine, obviously, Lorraine Avenue has a slightly different context, not as many tall trees. We want that to be more trans, transparent between the streetscape and the building. Those are much lower grasses, smaller plants. Again, we talk about the pavers and things to kind of help, help, uh, create that campus feel and, um, identify entry points, et cetera. But you see along there, uh, we did, we did talk at our meeting with, uh, on our west, that we might want to add a couple more trees on the west end of the Lorraine to match the number of trees on the east side of Lorraine. So we're committed to, to doing that. And this is the overall planting strategy. I did not read all these at the far west. I don't think we have time for me to do that today either. It's the types of species. This is showing a streetscape of the entry piece. So how the bus shelter, the trash receptacles, the main entry, the pavers, all the landscape come together at that entry point. There was a, a recommendation for our west to add a signage to designate the bike country. I think we were talking about doing that as well. So the bicyclists know where to put, pull their bikes into. And then this is the view we've already shown, but again, backing out of that, uh, detail, the front door, kind of what that looks like, the streetscape along Lorraine Avenue. And that's, that's it.
Um, all right, do, Director, do you or staff have a quick report? And before I open up a public comment, and it, go ahead.
Sure. So Nate will kick us off and then I'll close out.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you, Director. Um, Nate Law, Far West City Planner. Um, this did go to, um, Far West on Wednesday. We have a number of conditions from there. Um, I don't know if you want me to go through the public comment very quickly. I can do that. Um, we did have, um, if you go, yeah, there you go. We did have five comments submitted in opposition citing the safety and privacy, uh, potential noise and light pollution, um, loss of residential neighborhood access and, uh, concern over, uh, potential, um, legal ratifications. Um, we did have one comment in support of the project as well. I believe we have some residents here also to speak a little bit more to this, but if we go to the next slide. So, just to recap previously, these were the conditions that Planning Commission approved with. They are meeting the majority of the items, um, that were requested at design review and all of the items that were requested at the previous, uh, Planning Commission approval. The two outstanding items were the gateway signage treatment on the pedestrian bridge over Lorraine Avenue and the parking garage screening design having a more artistic flair to it. These items have not actually come up at the last, um, Far West meeting on Wednesday, so we're comfortable moving forward if you all, without those two items. Go to the next slide. Um, and I just wanted to quickly highlight too, some of the adjustments from the community feedback that they've received, um, throughout this process. Obviously, starting with the green space that was originally proposed as a surface parking lot, if you remember in the first presentation. Um, so they have adjusted that and had a meeting with the community, uh, looking at design concepts for that, that city planning was in attendance for. The, the actual height of the buildings themselves have been reduced. The office building has been reduced from seven floors to four floors and the parking garage has been reduced from six floors to five floors of parking. And then lastly, on the landscaping and screening, um, we feel as staff that they've done a really good job, uh, being responsible in their lighting and landscaping plans and are comfortable with what they're proposing. And so these were just the conditions that they, that Far West placed on them, um, or recommended that you all adopt from Wednesday. I won't read through them all. Um, staff feels, uh, strongly about a few of them or feels the same way about a few of them, um, namely, um, conditions one, three, five and seven, I believe. So you all can read through those, but I'll turn it over to the Director too, if she wants to speak.
Thank you, Nate. Madam Chair and Commission Members, um, as a reminder, when this project was here for schematic review, we talked extensively about the site layout and the rationale for that, um, and some of the factors going into that decision-making process. And so here today, the new information in front of you is around lighting, landscaping, materials and the site finishes. Um, as Nate said, that there has been extensive community conversation about this project for over two years. And we see that reflected in the proposal today, including reduction in height of the building and parking garage, which was facilitated by relocating some services and jobs outside of this facility and outside of the city of Cleveland. Um, thinking about traffic flow and the, the general low volume and low speed character of the neighboring streets. The city has talked in some of these community meetings with residents about how to, um, mitigate the impacts of the parking garage and this facility on that site. That includes coming out of our last community meeting, a recommendation for the on-street parking cutout next to the Gorsay's house to provide on-street parking for them in their home, as well as a recommendation to, um, reduce access at the north end of West one seventy ninth street, south of A Lane that still allows circulation in and out of that cul-de-sac through A Lane, but doesn't allow through traffic from the residential streets, one seventy eighth, one seventy sixth, A Lane, et cetera, um, to the parking garage. So the city is in support of that access restriction on the north end of West one seventy ninth street, as well as the addition of a traffic signal at West one seventy eighth to facilitate neighbor access in and out of Lorraine Avenue. Um, we also have received several, um, clarifying questions from the community around the appeals process and different legal questions around ADA, fair housing and the bearing of a two thousand and ten Board of Zoning Appeals decision and have had extensive conversations with our law department about the bearing of all of those on Planning Commission's actions today. The results coming out of that are that, that none of those, um, address what Planning Commission is looking at or the potential motions coming out of this meeting today, but we have vetted those in detail with our law department.
Uh, thank you. Um, so if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you guys to move back so we can make room. And ask any residents who would like to speak, um, to come up. If there are more, we can come up a few at a time. Really ask that you keep your comments to two minutes or less, state your name clearly, address the chair. And, um, I'll also check online first, but since you're here, if you want to come up first, go ahead. And, um, anyone else, maybe we have three and we'll do three at a time and we'll go down the line quickly. So, um, so good morning, uh, good afternoon. And, um, uh, please state your name and turn your, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, my name's George Gorsay. I live at thirty-seven forty-seven West one hundred and seventy-ninth Street. Own the business on the corner. I have just written one page, but before I start, I'm a little appalled that the Cleveland Clinic sponsored bedrock went through great detail to explain how they are ADA compliant. I have requested, I have made everybody aware of the needs of my children. And it goes unanswered by everyone. We are more concerned with bird safe glass than the well-being of my two children. Who have already suffered a setback when the houses around us were demolished without consideration for my federally protected children under the ADA. This curb cut, walk off to accommodate my family is a joke. That is going to be full of people parking to access the hospital. It is going to be people sitting in their vehicles, bringing strangers even yet closer and interfering more with the privacy and the needs of my children. It was take it or leave it. This whole project has been take it or leave it without the consideration of our most vulnerable residents. They show pretty pictures. Where's the picture from my front yard? Where's the designated bike lane for my special needs kids down my street with the protective curb? Going from two hundred cars a day to five thousand? My children will not have use of their federally protected neighborhood, their sidewalks, the streets, our yard, and no one wants to talk about it. No one even wants to acknowledge it's real. And it's appalling. At this day and age, we do not, we refuse to recognize the basic civil rights of disabled youth. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Douglas Baird and I've been here before and, um, I appreciate your time. I know we're, we're just hashing the same topics. But our neighborhood fought for the Board of Zoning Appeals Resolution in two thousand and ten. That prohibited traffic. resolution in 2010 that prohibited traffic on the hospital onto West 179th Street, and it required extensive landscape screening or beyond what the hospital was proposing. The changing of the zoning on one side of the street does not offset the fact that our neighbors, Wally fought for it, George, myself, my neighbor Barb, Ian, Stephen Maria, all of us still live there. Those were protections the city granted for our residential district, and now they're being ignored. And I understand what you've heard from legal. I've talked to them too. And I do feel that it is an appealable decision. And they asked that you put in very specific language if you want to further this proposal that states you are acknowledging that you are wiping out the Board of Zoning Appeal resolution that were granted, fought for in one by our community. The other point, there is a right of way at the rear of this development that accesses behind the houses and that accesses my additional three acre lot. It's being absorbed. It's on the map. The lighting site view that they give shows that it exists. It was honored during the BZA resolution. They granted the variance to allow them to plant landscaping closer than the required setback. But now it's just being wiped out. And that needs to be respected. We're not against the hospital's expansion. We are against the destruction of our neighborhood. And to take our streets from 200 cars a day and tell us that it's acceptable to have it go into four, 5,000 or more, it's just incomprehensible. We bought, we invested in the community with a quiet residential neighborhood. You're changing that. You are changing what we invested in. And the hospital had options to maintain traffic on their own property. And that's being ignored. They have put too large a structure and too small a plot, and we're being asked to absorb all of that inconvenience, where you should be requiring them to stay within their boundaries. And the final point, the rear of the medical office building has no landscape barrier, no hedge, and that looks right into our backyards. I have asked repeatedly if there would be windows on the back of the medical office building and was told no. There won't be any windows. They won't be able to look. There's huge windows and on three levels.
You're at four minutes.
Oh.
I apologize.
Thanks so much.
Can you hit the green button so they can hear online?
I'm gonna ask for your indulgence here. I, I have an episodic condition that flared up last night, and I'm very under the weather. I had to take medication that really slows me down. I submitted a statement that you got Wednesday. And the first item on that statement was petitions, signed petitions from the neighbors in the neighborhood. There's kind of things that's both effects. And I'll be as brief as possible. I'm here today to urge this body to enforce Cleveland Codified Ordinance 34913C, which governs the placement of conditions of parking facilities adjoining residence districts. The ordinance is unambiguous. Access points must be located as so as to do the least harm to the residence district. And the facility must be properly screened to mitigate adverse impacts. In fact, this very principle was affirmed by the 2010 Board of Zoning Appeal, which prohibited institutional ingress and egress on West 179th Street for their surface parking lot. That resolution was not symbolic. It was a binding acknowledgement by the city that funneling hospital traffic onto a neighborhood residential block was unacceptable. The fact that the west side of 179th has been rezoned industrial research does not negate the ordinance's application. Zoning changes on one side of the street cannot be used to strip the opposite side of its residential protections. The ordinance was designed to prevent this very scenario, a residential street sacrificed as the primary access point for institutional traffic. I respectfully request that the commission require the clinic to keep hospital traffic internal to its campus and to design access points and screening measures in compliance with 34913C as the law demands. Also, the traffic study that was done is considered invalid because it's not publicly accessible through the, through the office. I hit the button. I'm sorry. Yeah. Traffic studies conducted by the Cleveland Clinic are not publicly accessible. The study was not made public and the Cleveland Clinic committed to the patient confidential, confidentiality means that such information is not available to the public. Now, Cleveland regulations state that in Cleveland, a valid traffic study is considered a matter of public record. Public records in Cleveland are defined as any document created, received by a public office that documents the organization function, policies, decisions, procedures, operations, or other activities of the office. This includes traffic studies, which are part of the activities documented by the public office. Therefore, I'm, one more sentence. Yeah. Therefore, public access to the traffic studies conducted by the city, ensuring transparency and accountability in traffic management and planning.
Is there anyone else here who wants to speak? We'll switch. I'm gonna check online. It looks like there are probably some folks online as well. If you're online and you would like to speak publicly, please just raise your hand and Evelyn will let me know. And if anybody else would like to come up, if you guys can go ahead and back, we'll let some other people come up to speak as well. Anybody else here who would like to speak to this matter? Anybody online? Just hit your raise hand feature. Okay. I'm gonna kind of close the public portion. I just for clarification, the, we are here dealing with the, the design review matter that is before us only relative to your point about law. They have determined that this commission today is acting on a design review case specifically.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
With that being said, Director, in, in respect to the required screening for the ordinance, do we have any language? I know we, we generally will not consider it, but just for my understanding, what is the language with regards to screening that's in that ordinance?
Madam Chair to the Commission Member Shannon Leonard, Chief Zoning Administrator. So the ordinance that they're referencing, 349.13 is in reference to surface slots and parking garages in residential districts. The property has been zoned, rezoned to institutional research, but there is proper screening required between, from 352 regarding landscaping and screening. And based on the last plan that I reviewed, I haven't reviewed a full, a formal construction permit set, and that hasn't been submitted at this time. But so far, they don't need any variances as it pertains to the zoning code.
Yeah, to me, at least just from the standpoint of just looking at this, outside of that, there seems to be a significant amount of screening adjacent to the building and then in the other parcel. One question to the applicant, the, the kind of green space that you're showing in the two new vacant areas is, I know we had discussed the, the thoughts about that's coming online later. Is that, but you're showing like this phase approach. Can you talk about the timeline of when those spaces will be done? Because I, I think those is combined screening approaches. There's screening adjacent to the building, but then there's also screening across the street.
Sure. And to, to answer that question, to add clarity, I think what you're referring to is the image where we showed that we were going to install some of the screening during construction on the West 178th on the east side of our construction fence. The idea behind that is to allow those screening elements to get the additional years of growth and get the height for, for that screening sooner as opposed to at the end of construction, which, which would be typical. So that's, I, I think that answers your question. Is that?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, so the green space design outside of the, what's directly adjacent to the fence, are those proposed trees going in as well? Or is that like a later?
That will be later because obviously it is during construction, you know, at, at the, at the earliest convenient time, we will be adding all of our landscape. But obviously with construction site, we need to make sure that those trees will be in all landscaping, will be able to thrive.
Will you guys be using that area for additional laydown space? Or is the kind of construction sequencing going to stay all on the property where the building is going? Or do you anticipate stuff being like, you know, equipment or things being directly adjacent to residential property?
So, so we're still looking through and working through the construction logistics. To that point, we have committed to the councilman, to CAMs, that we are going to begin having conversations, you know, switching from design into this level of construction logistics so that the community will be aware of both, you know, what's going to happen, what they can expect, and how, how we can, you know, work together as a community.
So I'm, there's just assumptions that you guys are going to be doing this correctly, but I think to, to the survivability of those trees and kind of, you know, their growth, looking at, you know, the right soils that you guys are bringing in to do that. I'm, I saw some 2.5 calipers in the treeless. If there's a way to either get higher caliper trees or increase height for again, that day one kind of stuff, especially if we're going to bring in, you know, really exceptional soils. Just a matter of, of maybe my own opinion with regards to the species. I, I think try to avoid that green giant arbivideae. It's more of a residential kind of screening plant for snobby people who don't want people looking in their backyards. I think like what you've tried to propose, at least with the landscape palette, is a little bit more robust and, and, and exceptional. So, you know, some, some swaps there. So, you know, Austrian eastern pine, something that if you're looking, that is like a little bit more cylinder or tight, maybe Alaskan cedars or some hollies. I, I just think there's, you, you, you guys are using that, that specific species quite a bit. So if there's just any way to kind of vary that in respect to kind of what you're doing as well with the other planting. And just one last thing, I think I've kind of beaten this, that horse a little bit in previous meetings. That space on the west side of the building adjacent to the metro parks, I just think two benches and a circle is just like not sufficient. Like I just like, it, it's an exceptional facility. You're saying that the space is for respite for people who are going through really traumatic things inside the facility. You have the view to the metro parks. I just think more than two benches and something there. Like, I mean, I, I just don't get it. Like you've got this beautiful building, beautiful streetscape and two benches.
Can I, can I speak to that?
Go.
So the, the intention behind that is to have, you know, on the east side, the opportunity for that larger passive space for, you know, more people to be either active or passive. But the idea on the west side is really, it's a small space. It's, you know, constrained by topography, by the need for fire truck access, which to, you know, mention our flukers earlier, comment earlier today, right? That's, that's what we have to deal with and, and understand that. What it's really about, you know, when you do hear that, that terrible news and you just need to be by yourself, it, it really is meant to be small and confined so that you can be there by yourself and, and really start to understand what you're going through, what your loved one is going through, or even for our caregivers, what they have just gone through, through patient and having to give some of that news. So it really is, from a design intent standpoint, meant to be fairly small and fairly intimate. The east side is really meant to be the, the larger area with more benches, you know, seating, things like that. So.
No, I won't, I won't. I mean,
I just wanted to strongly enforce what my commission member just stated about caliper trees. I, I, I'm not, I'm going to go stronger than suggesting you must find larger caliper vegetation. It's, you know, maybe it's a Cleveland thing. Maybe you gotta go outside Cleveland. I believe the clinic has the agency and the bandwidth. You have, you have affiliations with Davy Tree or someone to, to come and plant some premature trees. And I'm not talking about one and a half, two half. We're talking maybe six and above. I, you know, you gotta truck it in. You gotta crane it in. I think that, that is vitally important in my professional opinion, that that's, that's a mandate that I would love to, 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 to hold you guys to. Because it's possible it's been done. Maybe not in Cleveland, but it's been done. And, and maybe Cleveland's a black hole, but let's not, let's not cause that to render us, render our inability to, to be creative and, and, and create solutions that actually are meaningful and impactful.
If you could indulge me for a moment, just to kind of speak as the local representative and then I'll kind of pivot over to specific design stuff. You know, I, just to kind of give the larger macro context, because I think it's useful. I may, perhaps you agree, perhaps you don't. It's essentially, and this is my word, not one that the clinic has used, but the clinic breaks basically west of the river all the way out to Sandusky as Cleveland Clinic West. It sort of operates as almost like a division of the clinic. And for lack of better words, Fairview is sort of the flagship campus of Cleveland Clinic West. And it's an aging building in a dense urban environment. And we are very fortunate. We've seen what's happened with hospitals in Cleveland. We're very fortunate to have this like internationally ranked hospital in Cleveland accessible to residents that is also bringing people in from around kind of the western region for healthcare. My North Star has been how to understand how we accomplish what I would call a one-to-one recapitalization of the hospital. We are maintaining these health services in the city of Cleveland. I would be lying by omission if I didn't acknowledge that the, the value of the job is important to providing city services, but needs primarily healthcare and recognizing that an argument could be made that in lieu of doing a one-to-one recapitalization in the city of Cleveland, it could very easily be done elsewhere outside of the city of Cleveland. And I bring that up because as we've engaged in this multi-year community process, hearing feedback and suggestions from residents and other stakeholders, many of those have been incorporated and I think improved the project. Others become challenging simply because it begins to jeopardize the one-to-one replacement and ultimately healthcare in the city of Cleveland. So I'm not going to say that this is the perfect solution. It's a solution that is trying to accommodate all of these externalities and come up with the best product. What we've seen along the way is, for example, a reduction of the building height. You know, there's been, just to, and just to kind of speak to the challenge of, of accommodating everything we would like to ideally see. Ideally, I think it would be possible to maintain hospital traffic solely on hospital property. In addition to the traffic engineer In addition to the traffic engineer determining that that's not possible, just how Lorraine structured and where there's traffic lights, that would cause likely building height to increase if you were to retain one-to-one services, which was loudly said by the neighborhood that they did not want to have such a large building in close proximity to residences. So I come to the day saying that I know that this is not the ideal project for many and that it is a change in many ways. But I think that it is the right thing for the city of Cleveland and the neighborhood and that the Cleveland Clinic, on advice from this commission, the neighborhood has done many things to help make this project the best version of itself it can be. To the specific design elements, I do think that what I see in the architecture is design compatibility with aspects of the existing hospital, which is sort of a combination of brick structure and glass structure. It does not look, the building and the parking garage do not look like something picked up from Fairfax and moved into CAMHS corners. It looks like it is something that is tied to the existing facilities. I think that there's the design considerations for the birds, I think, is important, given the proximity immediately adjacent to the reservation. And then I think when we start talking about compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, bringing the structures down, being thoughtful about the lighting, being thoughtful about the vegetation and the landscaping as a way to try to make the property ultimately blend in five, 10 years down the road to the maximum degree possible, things that are worth noting. I'm happy to answer any questions about sort of the life of these conversations. But as you can tell, there's a lot of passion, a lot of interest and that this is, you know, this is a, has been a challenging project that has built up to this point.
Madam Chair, one more, just a quick question to the director and staff. The ADA concerns, I'm not, just looking at the site plan, I'm not really, I don't really understand the concerns about ADA adjacent to the residents.
Not, we, we, we're not taking public comment anymore.
To the commission members through the chair, the ADA complaint provided to the city wasn't included in your public comment folder and goes into that in detail. It is less about the physical characteristics of the sidewalks, et cetera, like the slopes grading as we typically deal with, with ADA design, and more about the environmental impacts of construction and the clinic operations.
So are there any other questions or comments for the applicants? Okay, I will need to entertain a motion one way or the other. So.
All right, I'll take a stab at it. I thought Charlie was gonna do it. He's had such a great speech there, but I'll do it. I move to approve item number 202414, Cleveland's funded Fairview Hospital Expansion with the caveat that the applicant addressed the design review comments dated 9/3/25, that the planning staff recommendations of the bus stop pad, at bike parking, amenities such as benches and seating along Lowerian Avenue, and suggestion for a board-on-board fence along the green space for additional privacy for neighboring residents. And I also would like to add that Drew's comments concerning landscaping and the selection of vegetation and tree types, and also that the clinic install trees and things for that initial buffer that exceed, that exceeds six inches along that out property line.
Second?
Sure.
I understand the conditions you add, but could you also add information regarding why you are moving to approve?
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought Charlie, I'll conclude with Charlie. I'll try and recap what commission member Charlie stated. I think the clinic has, through this process, has been a willing participant in the community engagement process. They have created a design that responds to comments that have been made throughout the process. They've been very intentional about how things are landscaped and buffered. They appear to meet the zoning code as delineated for this particular use in the district. And the scale and size of the building has been reduced such that it appears to be appropriate towards context.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, Drew has a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Lucre.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
And Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Do you work with staff on the director and the staff on those conditions and clarifications? On us? So we have one public art, which is Ingenuity 5401 Hamilton Avenue. Hi Emily, I know you've been here all day. I've seen you back there. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury? And you can fly through, but they'll bring your slides up and turn this on. And while they're bringing up the slides, Tara, do you want to say something in advance? Okay.
I do, I do swear to it.
Okay, you swear. All right.
I'm muted.
Unmute before you swear in. Say yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I apologize, but you gotta move pretty quickly. We're half hour over.
We're gonna move so quickly. So, oops. Do you want to get my, oh, there we go. So as you guys know, St. Clair Superior is enjoying a huge renaissance as a arts hub. Ingenuity Cleveland has been in this large facility for a number of years now, and there are great activities happening inside that are artistic and creative. But the facade of the building is totally anonymous at this point. In conversation with our CDC and some of the other murals that have been taking place in the neighborhood, we have identified a location for a stretched vinyl over aluminum frame mural to be installed by West Camp. This is the same installer and technology that has been placed in our surrounding area on St. Clair Avenue. The mural itself is planned to be 16 feet high by 20 feet wide, bolted into our aluminum siding. We do have permits in progress, both for the change of use or signage plan on the building, as well as for the sidewalk obstruction to install. And we are looking to place this lovely piece of artwork, which is by an illustrator named Amanda Rose. She works with American Greetings, et cetera. And this is the rendering on the building. And you will find our supportive letter by both the owner and the CDC attached to the show or to the slideshow.
Great presentation. Very cool, too. Very cute. Go ahead.
I'll be quick as well. It's not in a design review district. This mural also that Emily forgot to mention is intended to be a rotating situation, similarly to Rebel on Public Square. I'm in support. I did reach out to Councilman Harrison. I did not hear back from him, but I always hear back from him if he's not in support of something.
All right. It's great.
Make a motion to approve the Ingenuity rotating mural.
Second.
Motion two seconds. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Lucre.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant, not present, and Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry, we should have done you first.
No, thank you so much. Really appreciate you guys.
That was like not fair. We have one mandatory referral declaration intent to vacate all of the unnamed alleys south of Abbey Avenue. Rick, welcome. I apologize to you too, although I saw you came up at the end. You were.
That shirt new?
To vacate the, actually the unnamed alley is called West 19th Place. It's in between West 20th and West 19th Streets. And it's fronted by Abbey Avenue. And go to the next one, please. We do have the consent of Councilman McCormick for this. You can see the vacation, proposed vacation areas right in the middle, kind of outlined in blue. With that road being vacated, the intent is to then turn it to a private drive and then develop those two parcels that are adjacent to that, to the right. Next slide, please. What they'll eventually have, our cluster homes, two facing Abbey and two, the other complex, which is two cluster homes facing the private drive. The next slide shows you the rendering of what they'll look like, proposed to look like. And next slide.
Abby, this isn't Duck Island?
It's Duck Island.
This is Duck Island?
Yes.
All right. Any questions, comments?
I do have a question. Is the, when you vacate, the ownership goes out to the center. Is this proposed driveway slightly east of the existing alley?
The people that are proposing this vacation also own three of those four parcels on the other side and they're trying to get the other one too.
Okay. But we're not just using the existing alley for the proposed driveway. Part of that alley is gonna become private property, not part of the project. Okay, yeah. No further questions.
Motion?
I will move to approve Resolution 95525.
Motion a second, call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Lucre.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Curry Scott.
Yes.
And Slade.
Yes.
Lastly, we have seven administrative approvals. I've looked at them. If anyone else, if you have any questions or?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the slated administrative approvals as presented.
A second.
Motion a second, call the roll.
Sorry, Anthony?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. We did it. I apologize, 40 minutes.
Oh. I have no director's report today. I can just confirm that our neighborhood planner confirmed with the Clover applicants that they do not wish to come today and will return at a later date.
Okay. I forgot about them, actually. So do we need a motion to postpone that? Or there's nothing? We don't need anything?
No.
All right, thank you guys. Meeting adjourned.
Jeff, why are you here?